If Jim is not here in time.
I think they need to rename this.
We do not have a physical quorum, therefore we cannot have an official meeting or board retreat. We will however move forward with discussions but there will be no action taken. Do we need a roll call?
No.
No. No roll call.
We're not taking it. Yeah, that's fine. We're not. Well, let's -- someone's going to take care of it.
Secretary is here.
Let's take a roll call just in case there's any sort of question to add we can say was here.
Okay.
Let me check. Are we live now?
We're being recorded.
All right, it's being recorded. Good. I just want to make sure it was stated.
Mr. Secretary, you want to take a roll call please?
Trojan.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Kennedy. That's what we got.
Any communications or petitions? Any visitors?
No visitors.
Okay. Well, before we get going, I just want to first of all express my thanks for those of us who, trustees, showed up. We were expecting two more that would give us a quorum. But I also would like to extend my thanks to all the staff, Dr. Experman and all you cabinet people and all the people that work for you putting together this marvelous package of information. I mean, I know it takes a lot of work and I know we do it once a year, but still it's a lot of work on top of the work that you already are doing. So, thank you very much. It's a very professionally prepared document for sure. Thank you. Okay, since we don't have a legislative update, we'll go right straight to the state of the college and summary. Good morning.
Morning.
I won't take too much time to do the executive summary because I know everyone has reviewed the video and also had opportunity to look at the PowerPoint in the packet for this morning. So, and I'm not going to read to you the executive summary. I will however just take a few minutes to give some highlights and then have CFO Olson give a few highlights just to set the stage for our other conversations this morning. A reminder of the process, a video was sent out to trustees to view and then submit questions so we could prepare for today. We did receive just a few questions and those will be addressed throughout the agenda today, so not necessarily with the state of the college agenda item, but with other agenda items in the packet.
Just up here, was it sent out to Brittany and the foundation board?
You know, I forgot to -- I didn't remember that. We need to send it out to the foundation board.
Because it'd be interesting for them to review it and see if they have any questions.
Yes.
Because I sometimes have a feeling that the two organizations are detached rather than attached.
Okay.
So, maybe make sure you send it out and have her ask them if they have any insight or questions or whatever.
Sure. I will work with Brittany to do that. That would be helpful.
They're raising money for what we're doing.
A lot of good information for them as well, for sure. Thank you. So, quickly, I will just hit a few highlights. We are all well aware of our district population, I think, because we've talked about it within this presentation a few years now, but also in other conversations. But our district population is 12,000. But our population in our district is declining in the tri-county region where the bulk of our students do live, including projected declines for the age group that's 15 to 19, while the age group right above that is tending to be projected to stabilize. But we still have known for a while that we need to be aware of the declining K-12 population and we are not ignoring that population. Of course, we'll still enroll that population, but we're developing additional strategies to enroll adults that do not already have a degree or certificate or some workforce training. So, that, that is a strategy in response to that and also in response to workforce needs. As you are aware, our educational attainment in our region is low compared to the state and the nation, so there is lots of opportunity to provide training and educational opportunities for adults 24 and older as well. Manufacturing and healthcare are still the largest two industries within our region, have been for a long time, and are projected to remain the two industries that employ the most people. I, that's reflected in the programs that we offer at Rock Valley and will continue to be reflected in any additional academic program changes that we have.
And your projections do not take into account the Stellantis plan?
Correct. So, that's a very good point. So, if you, yes, if you remember the slide, it was showing declines in manufacturing and healthcare surpassing manufacturing jobs projected around 2027, which, with our growing healthcare.
Go ahead and put your phone on mute, and we're in the meeting now.
Oh, very good, thank you, sir.
Jim Reed, Executive Director of ICA, or Illinois Community College Trustee Association, is on the phone.
Okay.
Okay. So, correct, so we, we're seeing some declines in manufacturing, but when the, the program that I use makes projections, they use data from the census, from the Department of Labor, but what they can't know if something is specifically happening that would impact a region, and Stellantis would be one of those impacts. So, those jobs are not accounted for.
Fifteen hundred jobs.
Right. As far as enrollment is concerned, we, we have seen some slight increases in recent years and meeting our goals and, knock on wood, still reaching our stretch goal for this particular term. So, credit hour enrollment is, is doing well. After several years of decline, it seems like it's building back up. The shift between liberal arts and sciences has been a little more towards the career in technical education. Not that we're exceeding the liberal arts and sciences, but we've grown the percentage of credit hours from about 20% CTE to about 30% CTE. So, that just reflects some of the programs we've been adding in that area.
Which if you follow the words "community college," that's what that infers is that we're still a heavy manufacturing community. And we still employ 20% of the workforce in manufacturing, so more technical education fits the community needs.
Yes, and I would say also reflects state and national trends in education and training as well. As far as student success is concerned, I, I do want to take time to highlight some of the improvements that we've made. We have seen some increase in the on-time completion rate, which we focused on over the last few years, based on the fact that we, we do trend lower than our peers in the nation and the state at that rate, but, and we are hoping to get more students through their education and training in a timely manner. So, we've focused on that and have seen improvements in the most recent year.
Have her pause.
We've also seen improvements in our graduation rates over the last 10 years for not only white students, but also black, African-American students and Hispanic-Latino students as well, which is, is a success for all groups, but we still do have gaps in achievement. So, though we can be proud that all groups are succeeding at a higher rate, we still wanna pay attention to those equity gaps and bring that closer together.
All right, could we just pause for a moment? Trustee Nelson has just arrived, so we now have an official quorum. Do we need another roll call, or we good?
No, I think the minutes will come to some.
The minutes have reflected. So, we, we now have an official meeting, an official retreat.
At eight fourteen.
Thank you.
So, just continuing on with student success, when all students are considered, I'd like to point out that those on-time completion rates only include that first-time, full-time cohort, which is not entirely representative of community college students, because we know we have a lot of students who begin as part-time and/or transfer into Rock Valley. And success rates, when we take those things into consideration, are higher. So, when we take into consideration our entire population and all the possible outcomes for students completing a certificate and a degree, we are doing better than when you just look at the first-time, full-time cohort. I'm gonna move on to the employees section. In addition to equity gaps we see for student success, we also have some equity gaps that are persisting in our employee group compared to our district population. We try to represent our students with our employees, faculty and staff, and represent our district as well. The greatest equity gaps are for the Hispanic population in, among both staff and faculty. We've been doing a lot of work with employee culture and we can see that there, it seems like there's been a positive impact on turnover, with turnover decreasing by 3.9 percentage points from 2022 to 2024. And within that time, we did, was the compensation study, so I, I assume that that did have some impact on improvements in turnover over that period. We, those of us who've been around for a while, and I think all of us have been in Illinois long enough to remember the state budget impasse and the budget crisis several years ago. At that time, we did have to make some reductions in force, but we've seen increases across all employee groups since that time. We've built back our student services support staff. We've been able to add a lot of roles in that area due to grant funding as well, so not just the state budget improvements, but with grant funds. And we've been able to stabilize the full-time faculty employment as well.
So, is somebody keeping an eye on the state budget and what potential impact could be for community colleges?
Absolutely. I know Ellen and, and all of us, but Ellen's paying particular attention to the projections for the budget for next year, yes.
Okay. Just to pause, trustee Gorski has arrived to the meeting, so we have a quorum plus one.
And I think with that question, it's a perfect transition for Ellen to talk a little bit about the finance portion of the state of the college.
This will be brief, because after we conclude with the state of the college update, I'll be doing an update on the 10-year forecast. So, as we all know that there's only, there's four large services, sources of revenue for Rock Valley College. That's our local property tax, federal grants, student tuition and fees, and state revenues. Again, the revenues from our local property taxes are dependent on the EAV values, and that has increased about 42% from fiscal year 2015 to fiscal year 2024. Federal grants and contracts, which had included the COVID relief funds, had increased from 2019 to 2021. Of course, we finished spending our HERF grants in 2023, so we have seen a decline in federal funding. State funding was restored and after the FY26 state budget crisis. However, we are very much aware of the deficit with the state of Illinois, and we are continuing to monitor what is going on for community college funding. Student tuition and fees has increased since fiscal year '24. That is due to an increase in tuition rates and credit hours. So, instructional expenses, which is a good thing, is the largest portion of the college's expenses in fiscal, from fiscal year '23 and '24. They are about 29% of our operating budget. And the operating fund balance has increased from fiscal year '23 to '24. The operating fund balance, as a percentage of operating budget, has increased over 50% over the last four years due to our conservative spending and the fact that the board put into a policy requiring us to maintain a 35% to 50% fund balance to expenses, which prepares us for any future issues. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a little bit. And lastly, this is just a reminder on how tuition is calculated, because we all monitor that, and I have seen a lot of the other local community colleges implementing tuition increases from fiscal year '26, and I am not proposing one right now. But, the maximum tuition rate is based on its one-third of our per capita cost. Our per capita cost was six, about $606, so our max is $202. Our in-district fee, in-district tuition, including fees, is $144 per credit hour, compared to a state average that ranged between $127 to $203. We remain lower than our peer and the state averages. I believe we are the sixth lowest in the state. And I'm gonna hand it back to Heather to finish this section out.
As you know from the state of the college materials, we also have metrics related to community that we measure on an annual basis. One is our industry partner engagement, and we've developed a framework, and Dr. Stewart and his area has started to collect data for that framework, to make sure we're doing a better job tracking internships and service to the college from our industry partners so that we can really track and measure our, our industry engagement that way. And finally, we have a target to increase the amount of RVC contractual dollars awarded to business enterprise program. And this year, we exceeded the goal with 21% of contractual dollars awarded to BEP-recognized vendors. Now, that can vary from year to year, depending on projects and who is bidding on those projects, et cetera, but I think that is an achievement for this particular year, and we'll continue to monitor that in the future. That does conclude the state of the college. Do you want to move forward with the financial forecast?
Ask questions if I have a question.
Any questions on this part? Yes, or trustee Nelson?
In your presentation, I didn't notice anything about, or I heard the mention of student services, but I'm particularly interested in our, our mental health availability to our students. And could you give a little more detail as to how we're doing in that?
Sure. Actually, Dr. Pyer, since he oversees counseling services, would be better.
Good morning. Making sure this is on. You want me to come up? Okay. Good morning. Quick answer to that question, our staff, we did have a couple of departures this past fall. Those two full-time positions, oh, one, college hard-nut money, have been replaced. One started before the holiday break and one started right after the holiday break, so we are fully staffed back in that regard. We have received, again, right before the holiday break, we received word from the state of Illinois that we were the recipient of a $120,000 grant to support the Mental Health Early Action Grant. We had received this a year ago, automatically through the state, and then had to go through a funding process and, and application process to receive continued funding. That process, we completed that back in August and were awarded the $120,000 in December. And we have already hired a part-time additional counselor to support students and have posted, or will be posting very soon. Do we post? I don't think we, we did post last week, another full-time grant-funded personal counseling position.
So, that would be three and a half?
We would have three and a half, hopefully here in the next month or two. We've also, now for the second year, we have hired an outside third-party vendor that provides online 24/7 access to a live counselor network across the country. We pay for 100 hours of that service upfront. We've done that now, this is our second year of that. We have not exhausted those hours in, in any of the current process. We've not, we've not reached the 100 hours yet, so.
Has it been, been, been utilized, though?
It's been lightly utilized. We would like to see that more utilized, but it certainly is available. Yes, Dr. Speerman?
Can you speak to how we're creating more of a mental health awareness on campus? So, we have another organization or agency we also use on Wellness Wednesdays or something?
We, we have for years now done a, a program, a series of programs called Wellness Wednesday. That happens on the second Wednesday of each month, and that usually is about four times each semester because of the cycle of the calendar. We'd rarely get five of those in, but always have four of those sessions offered. The personal counseling staff, we have, with the, with the grant funding, we've been able to place that grant in a position in the Health Science Center in the last year and a half now, and they are resourcing those health science programs throughout that building and then help participate in the rest of the campus programs. The part-time counselor, we're staffing in the athletic areas, in the, in the Physical Education Center, in an office right in that space where the students are in the athletic training space. So, we're trying to get those services to them, and we are also looking to create opportunities to get to each of the campuses then and spend some time at each campus in the near future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul?
Thank you. This is on the, on the state, plus also going into the financial, kind of the lead-in to the next one, I guess. So, you mentioned the, you know, some funding concerns from the state of Illinois, but my friends at the Fed level tell me that there's gonna be either, well, kickbacks and, or cutbacks in the, how the federal administration handles grants for education, kicking it back to the states to mandate, either giving them a pool of money or just relying on the states to provide the money that the federal government's going to not hand out over the next few years. You heard anything about that? Do you have any concerns about that?
Ellen and I are looking at each other because it is so new, it's like, you know, what, what have we heard? But, at this point, I, I have heard a little bit of that, but I think right now, we're really paying attention to what our legal counsel has been sharing with us, you know, with new executive orders and additional changes at the federal level. We're really just paying attention right now in how that might impact higher ed, and we do get regular updates from Robbins-Schwarz on how, you know, various executive orders and laws have direct impact. So, right now, we're just paying attention to how those new rules will impact higher end in general and Rock Valley specifically.
Yeah, and we know that there, I mean, there is several executive orders. We don't know when the impact of us directly as the local community college in Illinois, and what we also don't know is when we would be required to start implementing those changes.
Yeah.
You know, play the game in court for a while and things of that nature. So, we're still monitoring and waiting for the, typically it's at least a year before when they do the executive orders and mandate. By the time they get to it, then finally, we know how we're supposed to implement it and monitor it, but we're ways away from that. Regarding the, the actual funding or reduce, reduction of funding, I haven't heard how that's going to impact us or how they plan to reduce funding at the college level yet. We're still waiting on that.
Well, also, ICA puts out, it's getting like almost every day now, a newsletter, an email newsletter that describes from their perspective what they're interpreting to be changes to funding for not only state, but also federal money. So, if you read that, I mean, that's a pretty damn good source of input from ICA level. And I think we need to rely upon ICA also to let us know, because we're members, so that should be part of our membership benefit, is to let them tell us what's going on on a real-time basis.
I'm sure they will.
I'm sure they will.
But to your point, it isn't necessarily, I mean, knowing about it, it's just knowing how we're gonna deal with it if it comes, you know, happens, you know? And it'll likely happen, so there's a lot of talk, so.
Better to be proactive than reactive.
Right, and if, if we're talking about goals, that would be a goal. How to plan financial forecasting given the state and the federal stuff, you know, kinda going forward, and mapping out a contingency plan or plans for, you know, either one, so.
Well, I can tell you from the experience that I was a trustee when, 2016 it was, I think when we had a short, a major shortfall in state funding, we had to go through some employee reductions. And hopefully, whatever happens, we don't have to do that again. But those are the only areas, when you look at the budget, 70% of the, the funding is payroll and benefits. So, there's not a whole lot of other areas to make substantial changes if that's what is required. So, I hope we don't have to go through that again, because it was painful.
But our secondary plan was to reserve or to plan for any But our secondary plan was to reserve or to plan for any money from the state and that would be for capital projects, so we would keep operations going on and put on all certain operations, capital investments, which kind of led to, you know, late fixing of things and the like once the money came through and the like. But that was a, see, that was a defined contingency plan, and that's the type of thing that I'm looking for.
Well, you got two issues. One is the cash to keep going, and what you say is correct. But at the same time, we have a P&amp;L statement, and if you're losing because of the revenue shortfall against the expenses, then your fund balance drops down. And when your fund balance drops down, then that gives us all kind of other headaches. So it's a two-edged sword. The cash to keep going versus the income statement, which affects the fund balance. Correct, Ellen?
And keep in mind that because of the state impasse, as a board, you put in, you put in your contingency plan. So that 35, that fund balance, 35 to 50%.
Right.
That's a buffer. We will not be at a situation where, when the state, if, when the state did that impasse and we had to immediately react and do the RF, the reduction in force for staff and faculty, we would not have to respond that quickly because we established that because of that policy that you created. So we would be able to have at least a year to decide how or what we need to do to act. Where a lot of the colleges here, or Illinois colleges, they probably would not be able to survive that.
Because we have a much bigger buffer of operating expenses. Chris or John?
Well, I know that, I've seen a lot of those same messages from IKT, but also, it's newsworthy, for those of us who watch PBS, that the state's $3.2 billion short this year in the budget, they haven't fought, or they haven't, nobody's advanced a plan to help with that, although the Republican side has proposed massive cuts in social programs as, and that's almost pro forma. But the, both the House and the State Senate have veto-proof majorities on the other side, and we have our supporters in both houses, although the House majority is very, is, there's no room for error. But some, somewhere that they're going to have to make that up. It's, you know, we're already in an election phase because after our election, it won't be long, and people will have to be filing for governor and all the statewide offices. And so, 26. And so, you know, trying to look for additional revenues, and you have a lot of needs statewide, for example, transit, and the city of Chicago is, even with raise in real estate values is in trouble, and the teachers' union wants raises, and you've got, you know, as always, you have more perceived needs than revenue. And, you know, perhaps people are going to, well, we may have to take somewhat of a haircut. I think the proposed budget was for our revenue, state revenue, to stay even, flat, which would be great. And, but, but, you know, you know, I think JB, if it were a few million dollars, might write a check, but he's not going to pledge his whole fortune for that.
It's in the billions.
Yeah. Well, he's got it, but he wouldn't have much left.
So there was, was it IBH? They recommended their budget, which has a slight increase for Illinois community colleges across the board, what would be considered a slight increase for the universities. It'd be a huge increase for us if we were to receive what they recommended to the four years. But they're recommending a slight increase, and our understanding is that everybody's expecting overall a flat, but there will be some areas or departments that will take a cut this year. But I don't think we'll find that out more until, what, when is he doing his state? JB's, the governor's, February?
First. Yeah, it's coming up pretty soon.
February, yeah. So that's where we're at with that.
But also, I think it's not just a one-year budget deficit. I think it's a multi-year.
It's going to increase, yeah.
It's going to increase in the year two, three, and four from the current one, so.
Absolutely.
It's not just going to go away in one year. It's a multi-year problem. Okay. Anything else? Any other questions? If not, we'll go to Ellen, or are you done?
Um, do you want me to, I need some more questions.
Depends on your assumptions.
My assumptions?
Well, it's true. I mean, you, all of a sudden, you got net income positive for the next 10 years.
Isn't that a good thing?
Isn't that interesting?
It's better than the other way.
It's the other way, yeah.
For the trustees.
Well, the assumptions that we used for the tenure forecast, I just want to go through those real quick. Just remember, property tax revenue is our greatest, largest source of revenue. So our property, in the assumptions, the property tax revenue was an increase of 4% for fiscal year '26, and then 3% for fiscal year '27 and thereafter. It also assumed enrollment of 115,000 credit hours per year. Also, we kept tuition flat at $125 per credit hour with increases of $10 per credit hour in fiscal years '27, '30, and '33. I used the assumption of a 25% split for CTE and 75% for LAS. I did two state reven, two scenarios. The first scenario for state revenue assumed it was going to be flat, no increase from fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '26. And the second scenario was a 3% decrease in state funding from fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '26, and then the assumptions made was flat through fiscal year '29 with increases, I mean, flat through '28 and with increases in '29 and thereafter. Facility revenue was projected to increase at 2% per year. A gift, grants, and bequest was an assumption of a 1% increase annually, and other revenue to increase 2% annually, and all other revenues remained flat. On the expense side, I used an assumption of a salary increase of 3% annually, benefit increases of 7% in fiscal year '26, and 6% fiscal year '27 and thereafter per year. 3% annual increases for contractual services, materials and supplies, travel, conference and meeting expense, fixed charges and other expenses, and a 2% increase in utilities. Based on these assumptions, both scenarios projected that the college would be able to remain within the board policy of maintaining a fund balance of 35 to 50% while continuing to facilitate fund transfers to auxiliary, OPEB, restricted operations and maintenance, and future athletic scholarships through fiscal year 2030 or the next five years. The 3% decline in state funding is approximately $356,000 in fiscal year '26 and will result, just want to go to that last one.
Yeah.
Keep going. Can you, yeah, there, there you go. And will have a ripple effect in future years. And just so you know, a 5% decrease in state funding would be about $594,000.
So, question. At what point do we fully fund OPEB?
That's a moving target.
Moving target.
OPEB right now, based on the current actuarial assumptions that the state is using for OPEB, is almost fully funded. But remember, when they changed two years ago, they changed at the discount rate, and it resulted in about $11 million decrease in our OPEB liability.
Yeah, because one of the things that the auditors consistently point out is that there could be a move from state-funded to college-funded.
Correct. And we have incrementally savings for that.
Any noise on that front? Because that would make a big change in our financial situation.
And it also provides a buffer. If the OPEB expense does not pass through and we needed the money for cash flow purposes, we have that.
Oh, God. No, we're not going to do that.
So we'll see what that.
But again, that's, we're still talking about our contingency plan just in case the government comes back and says, the government come back and say, you have to cover that cost. We've already put some plans in place for years now.
To cover that.
That prepares us for this time.
I mean, so roughly, what are we percentage-wise funded, OPEB?
I'd say we're at 75% funded.
75% funded.
Yes.
So if the state were to push us, push it down to us, we'd owe 25% of whatever the number is.
Correct.
Rather than 75%, because we're 75 funded.
And when you say that, the 75%, how would that, is the state going to pass the money they've already got along to us to make us 75% or?
No, no. So OPEB is held at the state. It is their expense.
Okay.
And so there is a liability for the OPEB expense because that's.
Reflected on our balance sheet.
Right.
And therefore, if they pass it through to us, they will be looking for money from us, dollars.
To go to 100.
To go to it.
To fund it at the state.
So it's like Capital Development Board, with capital expenses, that they still expect us to send them money?
Yes.
They have some of it, but they need our portion of it to cover the entire expense.
Correct. And so we have been saving in case that event would ever happen.
Well, so this particular fund.
Yes.
Covers the SIRS pension or all pensions or?
No, it's not the SIRS pension. This is the other post-employment benefits, which is the college insurance plan. So this is the reinsurance plan for retirees.
And is, I'm not naive enough to assume that SIRS is not as fully funded like IMRF is. How much is SIRS short?
I do not know that answer.
Well, we probably ought to know that. I'd like to know. I can't speak for anybody else on the board, but, yeah.
Be good to know. Paul?
We don't have any control over the SIRS shortage, kind of like IMRF, so. Well, something, something that we do have control over, your projections for the EAV are, yeah, well, I consider them optimistic because, I mean, the shortage in housing now is real, it's trying to drive it up costs, you know, property values and the like, but real wages in the region for, unless you're in healthcare or in education, are flat or dropping, whereas the jobs go away in certain industries. So I don't know who's going to be available to actually pay for the homes, and plus certain pricing, retail pricing and stuff is only going to go up over the next two or three years. It's not going to drop, especially if all the tariffs that are proposed go into place. So people won't have the money for the homes, and I would expect a kind of a flattening and/or bottoming out in the housing market. So what contingency plans do we have for EAVs that aren't as rosy as you're looking at?
John? Oh, you want to answer the question first?
No, I'm just, let's hear his question so I can.
Go ahead.
I never argue with my good friend, am I right? However, I did read even in the Rockford newspaper that Rockford is the number-one housing market in the country. I learned that when I was down in Florida last week, which was of great news to both myself and my sister, who I was staying with. And now, that presupposes people are going to move here, but the analysis was that people are looking for inexpensive housing, and it shocked me to learn that the average home in Rockford was, it seemed like 150,000 less than the national average, at, however, to Paul's point, I think it was 244,000 for the average home. And I know from my own attorney experience that there are, you know, there is not gentrification, but there are neighborhoods that I never thought would come back. In fact, I think I closed the first sale over $100,000 in the southwest area of the city in two years. And there is, there is interest in, in our neighborhoods more than I thought. Now, I will say the northwest side is very bad now, but I would say 4% is cautiously optimistic. That's how I would, I would see it. And, you know, the problem in real estate is, one of the, one of the two of us is right, either Paul or me.
No.
I actually saw that, too.
Well, yeah, and I saw that, too, but they, typically with our, with our local paper, that only part of the story, like the first paragraph of a longer story, that, if you follow their logic and you follow other stuff, those people that are moving here aren't working here. They're willing to travel 40 miles or more to get to work. That's going to get really old for a lot of these younger people. They're not going to want to do it. A whole generation of people that grew up from work from home won't be working from home as people go back to the office, and they're not going to want to travel 40 to 60 or longer miles to work. I can tell you that as somebody who did it for almost 30 years. You know, you got to be a little bit touched in the head to want to be able to do that, and I don't think the people are going to do that. So I'm seeing in year three or four of the plan, the housing market dropping like a rock in Rockford, because that's bottoming out. Therefore, it'll affect the EAVs kind of towards the end of the fiscal forecasting plan.
What is 1% EAV worth?
Dollars.
I can't do that math in my head. I cannot do that math in my head.
Well, if the average house is 244,000, 10% of that would be 22-something, right? And so it would be 2,000 and something in EAV. Our sliver of that is not very high.
No, it's .0027.
And isn't the, I mean, city of Rockford, aren't they, with the Coleman Village project, they're trying to create this space of affordable housing?
Yeah.
Right? That is part of the strategy going into it so that it's not, the younger or newer professionals coming out are not automatically coming to overpriced homes that they can't afford?
And there's also another building they're going to try to remodel that's downtown, too, for housing.
Yeah.
There's a lot of empty remodeled buildings downtown.
Yeah. But I mean, they're underway to remodel them.
So I think the, but, I mean, trustee Gorsey has a great question on the floor. I do understand it, and there are several variables that could impact that, from affordable housing being built to stellantis being established that brings in additional income or families with income that may be able to afford those, those newer homes.
That's 2027, 2028, at the earliest.
Yes, the earliest is 2020. You're absolutely right.
It's probably when we'll get that check that the president promised from Mexico for building the wall.
Well, I just throw it, I just throw it out there, and I guess a homework question then would be, what does a change of 1% in the? And I guess a homework question then would be, what does a change of 1% in the EAV mean to the college in terms of funding?
That's the question I just asked.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying. Yeah. I just wanted to make sure if they put it on their homework, because they have so.
So Ellen, you got anything off the cuff?
No.
Don't guess.
I'm not going to guess.
Don't forget, it's Winnebago plus Boone plus parts of Ogles. So all those EAVs is what goes into that number.
Yeah.
And there are different ratios in each county, if I remember right.
Yes, yes. They're all very, a little bit different.
But it'd be an interesting number to throw out to us after the meeting is done.
Yeah, I can look into that and get that to you.
Anything else, Ellen, you want to go on with or?
The last thing I want to say right now is I feel financially, RVC is in a good spot. Our operating fund balance that the board implemented, I'm going to remind you, was in 2020. So it was after the state fiscal crisis. Helps protect the college should there be a temporary downturn in revenues and provides the college that if the college should fall before that, below that 35%, administration would have to provide a plan for the correction to the board in conjunction with that fiscal, the next fiscal year budget. If the college should fall below that 35%, the first thing we would need to review and adjust would be the fund transfers to restricted operations for maintenance and capital projects or other transfers to OPEB or any other program. The reduction in revenue, if the reduction was in long, long term, the college, we would need to review our expenses and make appropriate adjustments as needed.
But you've still got to protect the income statement to make sure the net income doesn't.
Well, we have room in the fund balance to go down a little bit.
Yeah.
But that's why we have the threshold of 35 to 50%.
Okay.
That's our buffer.
But because we have this fund balance policy.
Yeah.
We will not be caught off guard, so to speak. We have a buffer that is, and so we would be able to then bring a plan to the board to say how we're going to adjust for the following fiscal year, correct? That's, that's where we're getting at. And that's, so it's already.
And then rebuild that fund balance if depending how low it dipped.
So for the board, the sheet that you show on your monthly quarterly reports, on the backside, that little chart, that's the chart to watch. When that graph starts doing this, that fund balance ratio drops. And that's, that's the key to watch.
Yeah.
That's what I always watch.
Yeah, we, and then also annually, before we do any transfer, we talk about our fund balance percentages.
Right, right. Okay.
To maintain that.
Any other questions for Ellen?
Any other questions or homework? All right.
No, but that's why we have the, that's why we have the 10-year forecast so that we can see if there's something we need to adjust to now that impacts later. But if there was this situation where all of a sudden the governor says we're dropping certain, certain amount immediately.
Starting now.
Starting now, at least now doesn't mean immediately for us. We'll be able to adjust for at least until the next year and then develop that plan. So I want to make sure we all understand we're, we're financially stable.
We're financially stable.
Yeah. And I think Ellen does a great job at conservative.
Forecasting.
Forecasting and budgeting. So feel good about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Okay, we're not, Jim's not here yet. Workforce development, should we just move on?
Sure, if you want.
Workforce development, non-credit metrics report, Dr. Hanson Stewart.
This report deals with all non-credit workforce development items. You will recall in FY 2024, I did a report that showed the enrollments, completions, placements, and revenue streams for all non-credit programming that's workforce development. So today's report is going to be one similar to FY 2024, but this one only deals with the first part of FY 2025, which is July 1, 2024 to December 31, 2024. What I hope to do is come back to you in July when FY 2025 is finished, June 30, 2025, and give you a comparison between FY 2024 and FY 2025 because this report is now the second of its kind, but FY 2025 is not finished yet. So I'm just giving you an update of what has happened thus far.
It's always good to show trends.
Yes.
You know, at least three-year trends, if not five-year past trends to see what's happening.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So for some context, when we talk about workforce development programming, we are talking about things like continuing education. We are talking about CNC machining and truck driver training. We are talking about collision repair, and we are talking about massage therapy. We are also talking about state programs like HCCTP, which is from IDOT. So all of those things fall under the umbrella of non-credit workforce development. So for continuing education, enrollment thus far has been 798 total. We have had 225 enrollments in summer of 2024 and 573 enrollments in the fall of 2024. The combined revenue for continuing education thus far for summer 2024 and fall 2024 has been $216,931. Massage therapy has had 15 enrollments so far. We have had seven students in April 2024, and they are due to graduate in April of 2025 because that's our one-year program. And we just had eight students that started in September of 2024. They are due to graduate in September of 2025. The 11 graduates of the massage therapy program from April 2024 were placed as follows. So these 11 graduates, we had impressively, five of them are self-employed. So five students started their own massage therapy businesses. And then the other six students, they work for local massage therapy companies like Massage Envy, Massage Innovations, Wise Morris Day Spa, and Nordic Chiropractic, just to name a few of the companies that these students work for. The other program we have, which you guys signed the, the IGA for every year on a yearly basis is for HCCTP. They had 12 students enroll and nine students completed. 11 students were placed, nine students from the current fiscal year. And the reason why I included the other two enrollments is because those students were from the spring of 2024, but they were just recently placed in the fall of 2024. So I included those statistics in there because you may have asked, how does that add up? But that's the reason why I included those other two students from the spring of 2024. And the students have been placed in different companies such as Roofers Local 11, the Iron Workers Local 498, the Laborers Local 32, and so forth. And you would know that the HCCTP students earn several certifications during their course of study. So they acquire things like the CPR and first aid certificate, the OSHA 10-hour certificate. They acquire fall protection certificates, respiratory protection, scaffold safety, excavation, forklift, and many others. In the presentation that I sent you, you would have seen 19 different certificates. Collectively, those students would have earned. Collision repair. So collision repair had eight students, and we had those eight students complete in December of 2024. Those students all earned eight certificates each from ICA, and the ICA acronym stands for the Inter-Industry Conference on Auto Collision Repair. Those students are employed in various collision repair shops like Bodylines Incorporated and Anderson Collision Repair. A couple of the students are also in extended externships with the companies so they could get a little more hands-on experience and exposure. The revenue earned for collision repair for FY 2025 so far is $44,000. So CNC machining, one of our gold standard programs, they started with 16 students and 13 students completed. Of those 13 students, we had 41 out of 65 students, 41 out of 65 getting NIMS credentials. The maximum number of certificates that students could earn is five NIMS credentials. We still have 12 pending with NIMS for clearance to give those students their remaining certifications. And we had nine different industry partners that hired our RVC completers such as Ingersoll Cutting Tools, Astrophysics, Woodward, Ingersoll Machine Tool, Electrofoam, and Advanced Machine and Engineering amongst others. Our revenue stream from CNC machining thus far for FY 2025 is $135,000. Truck driver training so far for FY 2025, as you know, the students, this program is for five weeks. They spend 200 hours. They come from seven to four for five weeks. Those students have completed. We count completers as persons who have acquired their CDL. All right? So they must acquire their CDL for us to count them as a completer. And there are a variety of companies that have hired our students for FY 2025 so far. Companies such as Schneider, Western Express, Swift, Meborg, Teabuck Trucking amongst others have hired our students so far. Our revenue stream so far is $333,000. So customized training has done, you know, pretty good work every year since it's revamping. And we are proud to report that so far for FY 2025, we have had over 114 persons trained in many different areas of trainings according to what industry needs are. And we are also proud to report that General Mills recently used one of our new industrial maintenance and electrical safety trainings that we revamped. And we had 12 people go through that, and they were pretty pleased with the training that received. Our revenue stream from customized training so far as at December 31 is $103,000. And that concludes my presentation. Paul? Yes?
This is more to you. It's to the chair. Following any questions to Dr. Stewart, I ask we return to our original agenda schedule, item F, legislative update.
Okay, we can get started with the gentleman.
After, after any questions to Dr. Stewart.
I do have two questions. Number one, in the, in the detail here, you listed out the dollar amounts for collision repair at 44,000, 135 for CNC, 333 for truck driver training. You should put those up here because that adds up to 800,000. But more importantly, what about welding and mechatronics?
Those are credit-bearing programs. They are not non-credits.
They're not, not.
No. These are just non-credit workforce development programs.
But they're workforce development.
So.
Yeah. Okay, so what I'd like to do is to.
I'll explain it later.
Finish you off, Dr. Stewart, and introduce the.
Wrap up your presentation.
Thank you. I think you're back. Now, I'd like to introduce Jim Reed from ICA. Thank you very much, Jim, for coming up from Springfield. I hope the drive was painless.
All right. Good morning. Good to see all of you here.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right. Next, oh, yeah, sure. All right, I think I've never seen all of you before. So again, my name is Jim Reed. I'm the executive director for the Community College Trustees Association. I've been with the association now for just about six years. So I came to the association previously from the Illinois Education Association where I'd been the director of government relations there for 13 years. And then from there, previously at the Attorney General's Office, where I worked with Ann Williams. And it's been, it was really great to see that she is now the chair of the executive committee in the House. So sort of a nice connection that we have there, certainly considering the agenda we have for this year coming up. And lobbied for citizen action for a number of years before that. So come to you with a lot of experience in that front and really looking forward to this year that we have ahead of us in terms of our agenda, but also the partnership that we have with the presidents and with ICCB. And I'll get into a little bit as we go further along, so. So give you a little discussion about the 104th General Assembly, talk a little bit about some bills of interest and things that are going on. I heard some of the conversation on my drive up and some of the things that you all were talking about relate to some of those big topics. A little bit about our legislative priorities as well as the president's and just sort of show how we are working in concert. And then talk a little bit about lobby day, both at the federal level and hopefully some of you will be coming out to Washington in February, but more so focused on lobby day for the State House and then certainly open up to any questions after that. So the 104th General Assembly started back on January 8. They were in session for one day on the 9th. And in typical General Assembly fashion, they are, have been out of session now and will be back in session this coming Monday. The landscape, as you all, I think, talked about and addressed, is pretty much the same as it's been. Super majority in the Senate as well as in the House for the Democrats. Senator Harmon is again the Senate President, and Chris Welch is the Speaker of the House. So again, things really haven't changed much. There have been some staffing issues over in the House that probably some of you have read about, a little bit of a shakeup there. But it just in terms of subsensibility, in terms of how things will run, things are pretty much the same. Speaker Welch has made some changes as it relates to leadership. And he had always talked about having more of a rotating leadership position in his, in his administration. If you recall, under the Speaker Madigan, pretty much the same people that were in leadership had been in leadership forever. So it's nice to see that there's a little bit of rotation going on over, at least over on the House side. I would note the key deadlines for, for the House and Senate. Probably the most significant one is right at the beginning. As you will see, that the deadline for bill request is January 24. That was as of yesterday. But what they have done a little bit differently is that they have a blackout period this year. So any bills that have been drafted and brought forth as part of the new General Assembly can't be amended until February 7. So it's a little bit of what they call a blackout period. What used to happen in the past is that we'd get a ton of bills in early in the session and then folks would come immediately afterwards and start coming with amendments. And it really did sort of begin to tax the folks at LRB unnecessarily. So they created this blackout period that once a bill has been drafted, then you can't come back with any amendments until the 7th. A couple of other deadlines that we're watching very closely are the governor's state of the state and the budget address, which will be coming down on February 19. We were watching that with particular interest, and I'll get into probably a little bit more of that later when we talk about our agenda and things like that. You'll see the usual House, Senate deadlines for bills in and out of committee pretty much follow a similar format with the idea that they will be adjourning by May 31. And for the most part, they always do meet that deadline, usually for reasons unrelated to state government, more so other plannings that they have, graduations, travel plans and things like that. I do remember a year, a number of years back when Pate Phillips was the Senate President and he had a fishing trip scheduled for April 16, I believe, and they adjourned April 16. So, so they're, they will fluctuate those deadlines to meet their needs, not surprisingly. So. All right, talk a little bit about some of the key topics. And again, I think I heard some discussion about this on my, on my drive. Probably the biggest one is going to be the budget. As you probably are aware, there's nearly a 3.2 budget shortfall this year. So the thing that probably has not been talked about is a possible solution to that. Of course, there have been talk about cuts, but the real question is what are the Democrats going to do in terms of try to come up with some kind of clever revenue? There have been some discussions about what to do with, of course, income tax because that's really the most substantial revenue that the state has. So we may see something around that. If you remember, a number of years ago, the millionaire's tax was on the ballot and passed. So that's probably where we're going to see something coming along, at least from what we have heard in terms of the budget for education. The State Board of Education did recommend a 2% increase. So right now, at least we are not hearing of any cuts coming to either higher education or K-12. Some of the agencies independently have been asked to look at their budgets and be prepared for up to a 10% reduction. But again, knowing sort of where we are politically, that 2026 will be an election year for all the state constitution. for all the state constitutional officers and a number of the House and Senate members. They're probably not likely to make too many significant cuts. We may see some, of course, at the, at the federal level as it relates to education. But certainly at the state level, we don't anticipate that there are going to be any significant cuts there. Yeah.
So Jim, so since many of our programs affect multi-years, should we not be tracking multi-years on the budget itself? In other words, I heard it's like 13 billion for the five-year period? Shouldn't we be watching that as well as just the current year budget?
We do, and we do certainly do watch that. What the, the challenge there becomes that the budget amounts that are recommended for different agencies, different department, fluctuate from year to year. So obviously last year is 5%. This, this coming year it's 2%. What we have found is that they tend to always build in a little bit of an increase even if they're going to hold it flat. And, and part of that is that ICCB as well as IBHE prefer to come with their recommendation of a small increase for education in light of the fact that under the Rauner administration, there had been cuts, as you all experienced, of course, for a while. So the idea is that for, at least for the next, you know, while, while JB is in office, the administration wants to continue to make up some of that shortfall from those cuts. So we are certainly aware that that budget shortfall, that number is, you know, going to probably be the same over the next couple of years going forward. Yeah.
Is it fair to say, given your experience in all those other positions you've been in, excuse me, plus the one you're in now, to say that given that after this election cycle, we're going right into another election cycle, that the state's probably going to look at a combination of short-term patches and then a longer-term, probably less hurtful institutional, longer solution to it? Just to make it seem like they're doing, doing the right thing?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, they will certainly not do anything, I think, between now and, and 2027, right? I think that's probably when we will see any significant, you know, revenue or income changes that will come about will come after 27.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just make it work.
Thank you, Jim. Next issue, of course, is pensions. So there's been a lot of talk about what to do with, as it relates to the Tier Two pensions. Those individuals, or I guess it's the first year that there are individuals in Tier Two that are, could bring a claim against the state for the underfunding. And overall, the pension systems in Illinois are about $139 billion underfunded. And the ranges on the pensions run from about 23.5% to 47% in terms of funding ratios. So our systems are severely underfunded. And the challenge really becomes, I think some of you may have seen the forecast that came out, that to really fix the pension systems, it's going to be about $30 billion over the next 10 years. So, you know, in light of the fact that we've got $3 billion already in budget shortfall and you add the pensions on to it, the city of Chicago is asking roughly for about a billion dollars. So there's really not enough money. I think it goes to your question that we're going to see some kind of revenue enhancements have to happen, you know, pretty significantly over the next three to five years to cover all these shortfalls. In terms of some specific topics that relate to education, dual credit is certainly one that everyone is talking about. If you remember, we had House Bill 5020 last year, which, which didn't pass. And really want to credit the presidents, in particular Mike Boyd, President Ken Keke, who were really instrumental and really active in making sure that that issue was addressed. I'll talk a little bit more about dual credit as we talk about some of the other topics. But certainly, this is one because dual credit is making up such a significant percentage of the increases that we've seen in enrollment. People are really starting to talk about it more. And so the real issue comes down to really credentialing, right? What are the standards going to be for credentials for those that are offering dual credit? And we'll see probably, I don't know if we'll see any legislation on it or the early part of the session, but certainly the issue itself is not going away. It will probably be addressed in the later part of, part of the session. Higher ed funding is another hot topic. Of course, the public universities have already done a pretty elaborate study and they've come down, come to their conclusion that they need about a billion, over a billion dollars, 1.4 billion dollars. There's another billion that you can add to the other totals that I've already given you. But nearly a billion dollars that they need to sort of bring the system up. In response to all the work that they had done, Brian Durham and ICCB put forth a funding work group. And so we've been meeting pretty regularly with a slightly different approach. The approach has been really sort of looking more, more futuristic and what really needs to be addressed rather than just coming up with a raw number. But there is certainly, our number for the community colleges to, to sort of get to where we need to get in terms of funding probably is in that range of 800 million to a billion dollars as well. But again, our approach has been a little bit different and we will probably have those recommendations that will be put forth to the ICCB in April. And then from there, the ICCB will decide whether that's something that needs to be addressed legislatively or how they want to approach it. And then the, the last issue is around transfer and articulation. Again, this has been a, a hot topic for a while. This is certainly a topic that is both on the president's and also the trustees' priority list, so. So those are some of the topics. The only other one I'd say that's not on here that certainly will be a topic for discussion for us will be around the Business Enterprise Program. If you remember last year, there was a lot of talk about the community colleges and public universities not meeting that 30% aspirational goal. Of course, we held a summit back in September to truly talk about it and really talk about the rationale and reasons behind why the colleges and universities are not meeting that goal. Aside from the City Colleges of Chicago, everyone else was probably at 10% or less. A lot of that has to do with the fact that many of those business, businesses, minority, women, veteran-owned businesses aren't seeking certifications. The certification process is challenging, number one. And number two, a lot of those businesses are already, have substantial business that they don't need the certification. And probably the second reason and more realistic, more significant is the fact that you don't have a lot of these businesses in all parts of the state, right? If you're down at Shawnee or Spoon River, you don't have the availability for those businesses. That seems to not resonate with the General Assembly because we have, we have another bill that's been introduced that sort of takes it a step further and looks at that aspirational goal and asserts some penalties and damages if you're not meeting that goal. So again, this is going to be a topic that we're going to continue to see as we move forward, so.
And Jim, we've been talking about that, as you know, at the President's Council. Been trying to get in front of that as well.
Yeah.
And I think this year, we, did we meet our BEP goal?
We met our goal.
We met our goal.
We met the 30% goal.
Yeah.
No, I think you said 30% aspirational.
We met the 20, we were at 21% and of the goal. So that was like, one of, we were pleasantly surprised as well, but we're glad we made that goal. I think at the time they were asking for a six, a minimum goal of six to 13% and not the aspirational goal of 30%. And we made it to 21%, so.
Yeah. That's, that's, that's great. Yeah, so.
But then again, it has to do with what projects we have going on.
Correct.
And what founders decide to do.
Yeah.
You know, the other challenge is a lot of, they're not being certified, but we give contracts that are less than 25,000. So how do you account for all the money we give services, for services and products that's less than 25%? Then you have to go through a bidding process. So if you include that number, the number probably would be higher.
And that was part of the discussion at the summit was really to reevaluate how we're giving credit because there are, many of the colleges, yours included, are working with these businesses but are not getting credit for it, right? Because either they're not certified or if you're working under the Capital Development Board, the CDB is the one that gets the credit for minority business, not the college, which makes no sense, right? So really that formula needs to be adjusted. I just think that the conversation has gone such that, at least thus far, the General Assembly, the few that sort of really are following this issue, haven't really been responsive to, to adjusting that goal. They're not, they're not going to reduce it from 30%. We know that about. But there just needs to be a recalculation in terms of how the colleges get credit for it. So that's what, that's what we're really hoping for.
I trade that off for the first item on your list here.
You what? I'm sorry.
I would trade that off for the first item.
Oh, you would? All right. Well, speaking of that, it's a good transition. We'll go to our, our priorities. So these are our priorities for the 2025. If you recall in the past, we did list things like local control and all those. But we sort of moved those down because those are sort of more core, core principles and core goals that we are always mindful of. But in terms of really the three that we are aggressively working on and trying to accomplish, at least for the presidents, they are supportive of the idea of authorizing community colleges to award back alert degrees in the applied sciences. And again, this is based upon a lot of the work that we have done with the Joyce Foundation, which is now our fourth year of funding. They really looked at workforce needs and really overlaying those with equity as well as capacity at the individual colleges. And so basically where we came, sort of with the bottom line was that if colleges, you know, meet certain standards, can show capacity both from the funding perspective, also from the faculty perspective, they can work, you know, collaboratively with their local public universities. It's a program that they're already offering a associate's degree in. Then if there's a workforce need, the college should be able to offer a bachelor of applied science degree in that particular field that they determine. So, so that's really where the legislation is that we have that really would allow for that. There were some particular fields of study that sort of rose to the top, not only in surveys that were done by the presidents, but also some of the studies that we did with students. We interviewed nearly 2,000 students at 10 different colleges. So things, of course, nursing, right, not surprisingly, sort of rose to the top. Industrial engineering, cybersecurity, you know, in the health fields, phlebotomy, those kinds of things. So, so those are the ones that have sort of risen to the top. The legislation we have does not specify any of those particular career fields, but we know that those are the particular areas that both students as well as employers, because we did do focus groups with workforce partners as well as employers to, to address those areas. Yeah, Bob?
And the other one was early childhood education.
Oh, and early childhood, yes, correct.
So as you probably know, we have a program with NIU for engineering where they take two years at Rock Valley and they take two years of NIU courses taught at Rock Valley College. But the degree, final degree is NIU. So how would this, how would this work under that scenario?
Yeah, so I, I think the thing to keep in mind is that any of the two plus twos or three plus ones that currently exist would not be impacted by this. And this would really be, you know, in places where there aren't those kinds of opportunities that you just talked about, like the partnership you have with, with Northern. There are lots of, you know, colleges that just either don't have those or students who don't have the capacity geographically or time-wise to get to public university. So those are the places that really we feel this is going to be more significantly impacted. Where those students who either, you know, would like to, surveys says nearly 75% of them want to get their bachelor's degree, but they don't either because of geography or other reasons, cost. So this provides that opportunity for them.
And to, to add to that, because it's in alignment with the presidents as well, but these, so the goal is that if we have these four or five areas, right, it's, it's throughout the state. But let's say one is in engineering. But we would not offer that because we would be competing with, with NIU on that. And we probably wouldn't do nursing because we have nursing on campus. But we, we would focus on maybe industrial maintenance and early childhood education because those are the two areas that we can grow and it's not competing and our region would still need, need those.
Right. And the language speaks, and the bill language speaks to that specifically, not having overlapping or redundancies.
Sorry. I would just see it as an opportunity to make sure that a nursing program they all had, you could get bachelors. And then the industrial engineering or whatever, depending what engineering program you have, you know, it may be different for goals for certain students than the one we have with, with NIU right now. And then the cybersecurity, those, those top three would have been the first ones on, on my mind. Now, in terms of some of the laboratory sciences, some of the institutions aren't looking for bachelors. They're just looking for laboratory technologists with associates and certain certifications. Bachelors would be, would be, would be a bonus. But medical laboratory technologist with a, or cytogenetic technologist with a bachelor's would be an interesting mix.
Jim, am I right in a, in postulating that we want to get our foot in the door and we don't want to be working against our public universities in this approach?
Absolutely, yeah. Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, that's part, again, that's why the legislation's been drafted the way it is is that it does require collaboration with the public university that overlaps the district, so.
The premise is that we're meeting the need that's not being met.
Correct.
By, currently by us is two years or currently by our four-year educational partners. And so it's not to compete with them.
Not competing, right.
It's to address the need in our region that we believe it's necessary in this area for growth.
In the vernacular, two plus two, is that?
Two plus two.
Yeah, two, are we doing any, anything other than two plus two right now?
Okay.
Well, we have the nursing that we have, but in nursing, I think we have a couple of three plus one agreements with our nursing program.
Okay.
So, but only in the nursing program where we have three plus one. And then the two plus two with NIU is very unique here, as you know. And then besides that, we have just the two plus twos to transfer from those two-year to the other four-year institution. Yes. Aviation?
So would the, would the degree be a community college degree? What would it say?
I'm sorry?
Would the degree, the bachelor's degree from community college?
Yes, a bachelor of applied science from?
Correct.
Yes.
25.
So, yes. Rock Valley Community College, yes.
Oh, you do?
In cybersecurity, that'd be enough for you to get a job at the feds right now making 75,000?
AI too. AI and cybersecurity.
I mean, I love it because I have a son that's hopefully graduating from Rock Valley this spring. But he does not want to go anywhere. He just wants to be home. He would love to keep going to Rock Valley College to get his bachelor's. He's really stressed about having to leave home.
And for those of you that are interested, on, on the ICCTA website, we have a dropdown under, I think, education. We have the surveys that we did. And so it's really interesting to look at the student surveys. And probably even more so than just the raw numbers were the narratives. And we probably got close to 400 comments from students that's very similar to what your son said. Like they don't want to go anyplace else. They want to, you know, stay there. And so as we used to say when I worked on the K-12 side, you know, a student's zip code should not determine their ability to get an education. And so likewise, we think at the community college and at the higher education level, that where you live shouldn't dictate whether or not you can get a bachelor's degree or not. You should be able to, to attain one, so. Secondly, as it relates to transfer process, so this is happening in, in several different ways. The common course numbering has been a, a challenging topic, to say the least. So the original discussion was around the idea that both community colleges and public universities were going to try and work around a common course numbering system. Senator Castro really sort of took the lead on this issue. But we had one rather challenging phone call with the public universities. And I think through that it became pretty clear that that was, first of all, going to take a long time, probably four to six years to fully implement. But I think the sort of wisdom of the, of the community college presidents was that it might be easier to get the public universities to, to fall in line if, in fact, the community colleges themselves had common course numbering. So I think now that's sort of the focus, right, to, for the community colleges themselves to align their numbering. And then from there, take that to the General Assembly or back to Senator Castro and say, hey, we are in alignment now. The public universities need to follow suit. So we'll see how long that takes, but certainly I know that, that is underway. And then lastly, of course, this issue of And then lastly, of course, this issue of maintaining local control and really sort of looking at this issue as it relates to the Capital Development Board. As you, many of you are probably aware, that's more of a political list than anything else. And, you know, every few years it changes. You might be near the top of the list one year, and then the next year, you know, or two years down the road, you're a little bit down the list. So the idea has been to change the threshold for those projects from 50,000 to 100,000 moving forward. So. So that's the presidents. And then our priorities as trustees are pretty much the same. So I won't go back into it again. But again, when we talk about, as we have started to call this workforce, community college workforce degrees, with the idea that it's sort of taking a little bit of that fighting that the, that we originally sort of heard from the governor's office that part of the reason why they were having a challenge sort of supporting was that they felt like it was an internal fight between the public universities and colleges, sort of a family fight, and they didn't want to get into that. So we started sort of renaming it and saying, you know, this is not about our challenges with articulation or transfer. We understand that there are challenges there, but this is more so, as we said earlier, about meeting workforce needs that are unmet. And so we've started referring it in some ways as a workforce degree. But again, it is the community college baccalaureate. Second being transfer and articulation. And I guess those ones. I have another slide. So. So any questions as it relates to just legislative agenda or any of those topics?
Looks like a pretty full legislative priorities.
Yeah, it will be, certainly as we move forward. You know, it's going to be a full session, but I think because we know that there's going to be quite a bit of challenges on the budget side, that we sort of want to stay focused. We know we'll have to play defense on something that'll be coming up. So it will be a busy year, though, in that sense.
I know this is a local issue, but there has been some movement in the past in parts of our legislature to make our district regional as far as trustee voting. And of course, we don't think that's a good idea.
Yeah, we don't either.
We don't think it's a good idea. Is there anything that your role can play in saying, don't do that?
Yeah. So when this issue came up last year, two years ago, I think Representative West had introduced a bill that would have required that for purposes of representation. We were able to sort of push back and say, at least, you know, one example was Springfield, right? So they do run in individual districts in Springfield. The rationale behind that was that they wanted to have representation from all parts of the city represented on the, on the college board. At least in Springfield, the east side of Springfield is more, there are more minorities on the east side of Springfield as opposed to other parts. So the idea was that if you created a district there, that you would have some minority representation on the board. Well, when they drew the lines for the board, they drew it with the east side, but they drew in the lake. Well, the residents that live along the lake are probably the more affluent. So who do you think represents the east side and the lake? Somebody from, lives on the lake, right? So even though you have those districts, you don't have that kind of representation. So we've been able to say that really, one, you don't always get what you want when you draw the lines because at least the way the legislation's been drafted, the trustees themselves are drawing the districts. So that makes it a little bit political. But secondly, that we have found that the representation of trustees should be for everybody in the district. They shouldn't just be representing their segment. It sort of leads to that little bit of a Fichte mentality. So I think that mindset has been one that's carried through. So I don't anticipate we'll see that legislation again.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I think it would lead to, if you don't do it, like in our district, you know, it'd be a goofy-looking pie or a gerrymandered, you know, district, which probably wouldn't actually achieve the goal that you really wanted to. And as it stands, our board tends to be kind of half or a little less than half from Rockford or Rockford addresses, which is what I think Representative West kind of wanted, representation for Rockford, but then represent for other areas of the district. Matter of fact, we have a board member who can't be here today, but represents, and she lives in Boone County, Belvidere. I mean, so we have people at even the periphery. We have somebody from Machesney Park, so.
I live in Boone County too.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, but we have two and then a few here. So, but I don't consider you Boone. You're everywhere, Bob. But Crystal's awfully particular about, you know, she's got the Belvidere flag. But that said, I appreciate your support, you know, for that. And I think as, in terms of fellow candidates, I mean, fellow board members recruiting other candidates to replace ourselves or fill vacancies, we're cognizant of trying to represent the district equally and fairly. I mean, so, so thank you for that.
And the other way that can be accomplished, I mean, I know places like Heartland, a number of their board members are all just right from around the Bloomington Normal area, right? But you have satellite campuses, right? So if you, you know, if you're aware of that, you put a satellite campus maybe in a more remote area that brings that part of the district into the community and into the, you know, feel like they're represented.
Did you hear about our drama doing that here? But it's all right.
I have heard about.
But we're fine with it. We like what we have.
All right. So just a piece here, to talk a little bit how well community colleges sort of in general are prepared for the future. And so really, there's just a number of trends that have come up in some articles that I just wanted to share with you all. But this first one, I think, talks a little bit about this first trend that younger students are embracing short-term credentials. So we're filing, of course, a 10.3% growth in credentials awarded in 2024. And this, I think this interesting fact here, in 2023, learners age 18 to 20 led all groups in certificate completion, which was an 11% increase over the prior year. So any kind of things that you're doing as it relates to credentials certainly will be something that will certainly benefit you as a, as a college and as a system moving forward. Secondly, we had some challenges with FAFSA, and we know that this particularly impacts community college students. So really, the idea that we, that community colleges moving forward really should be thoughtful about how their financial aid offices can communicate with students more effectively, more efficiently. It'll certainly be a way to sort of win over and maintain your students that you have at the college. As we talked, third was about this dual enrollment issue. Now, dual enrollment programs constitute nearly 21% of college enrollment nationally, which is a pretty significant number. So as we continue to watch the numbers, part of what will be important is some of the data. And this may be an important, the second bullet point may be an important part is you, for those of you that are going to Washington, with all the talk about dismantling the Department of Education, there are some really good things that have come out of it. We've put together a list, and we will have that actually for those that are attending Washington, the ways that the Department of Education help higher education and community colleges in particular. So there are a number of ways that community colleges are aided by the Department of Education. And getting this data around dual credit is certainly one of them. So, so we'll continue to watch that. AI obviously is an important part of the trending that we have seen, and it's important to incorporate it not only just in terms of your campus for, you know, purposes of, you know, record-keeping, making the system more streamlined, but also just finding ways that students can use it in their careers. So I don't know if you have an AI program here at the college. I did a presentation for the trustees in one of our seminars that really talked about some of the colleges up in Wisconsin in particular that have AI programs that are focused on AI for their careers for their students. So something to think about as you move forward that enables them to not only utilize the benefits of it, but also make it a part of their career moving forward.
Jim, just so you know, and I think it's already public, but one of our goals, one of President Spurman's goals, is to develop an AI program for us, for our community college.
There you go. You're on the cutting edge. This should be the first, because I don't think any of our other colleges do it that I'm aware of. So you would be the first.
And not to be discussing any, any goals which haven't been approved yet. But AI has been here since, almost as long as they've been alive, or a little bit longer, actually, but formally since 1972. Right now, it's a kind of a marketing thing. You gotta take a look at it institutionally for your systems and like. And when you said like document keeping, that's one of the last places I would try to do it because AI right now is predictive and doesn't actually verify itself. So you need a way of verification. And you certainly don't want to apply it to anything that's a system of record. We've talked about this in government, and we've talked about it with other IT people. And there's a real fear of relying on AI for automated data input for systems of record that doesn't get, go through a vetting or a verification process. Because as an IT professional, we know that a lot of AI is generated from data on the internet, which 99.5% of it's junk. So your answers are kind of, need to be reviewed. But it's something that needs to be reviewed with any new system wherever, because everybody has options or add-ons or integrations with it, you know, going forward. So, you know, rather than a, I think you need to take a look at it as rather than other technology. Work remotely from home technology, servers in the cloud technology instead of PCs on the desk. It's an overarching kind of, you know, a solution to addressing either administration needs or educational needs. I think the topic came up in a public discussion of plagiarism software and stuff like that, and how AI is kind of involved, you know, in that. But I can tell you, some of the plagiarism software did the AI to find that some of my papers, papers from college 30 years ago were being somehow reproduced on the internet. And I'm like, why, they weren't even that good? So, and they got better grades than I did on them. So, but that said, I think it needs to be integrated with a large. For example, for the colleges, we have some coursework or computers that are actually the computers in the cloud. We're paying for computer space for students in the cloud. And that's, I don't see a lot of talk about that in business because it's really, really expensive for the average businesses. But sometimes when you're running a dedicated application, engineering program or something, it's really nice just to have a standard build and have people be able to log into it from any type of computer that they have. Is there any changes or trends in terms of that? I mean, moving away from traditional desktop-based or laptop-based, everything's there to moving your educational resources and your platform into the cloud. And then that ties in with AI because AI would probably be involved in authentication, some of the other stuff that you're doing in the cloud and stuff like that. So.
Yeah, I think the places that have, there are, there are some colleges that have turned over literally almost all of their administrative functions to AI with the idea that they want to put people in places that are more directly interacting with students. So some of it has been for purposes of adjusting resources. But clearly, as you've indicated, there are challenges to, you know, turning over your entire system to AI or even significant portions of it. So, yeah.
I think it'd be interesting if Iktu, you, your staff could periodically send out to us guidelines or best practices that you're seeing around the state or country that we might be able to employ, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel, but also to keep us on, on a good path, so we don't get off the path, you know, of good practices with AI. I think we'd appreciate that.
We did a seminar a couple of years ago, I think, on AI. But we, but that's a great idea to send out something, you know, as this topic has certainly ratcheted up in terms of.
Your newsletters are quite readable, and I like reading them.
Yeah, no, certainly.
Nowadays, we're getting them once or twice a day.
Are you emails?
For obvious reasons.
I'll talk to Kim about that. The other, next trend is a little bit, we talked about in terms of just overall college trend in terms of enrollment increasing. I think the important thing here is interesting, certainly as we talked about community college baccalaureate, because one of the myths is that the same students that are attending public universities would be the same students that would be interested in a community college baccalaureate. The reality is that the majority of students that are enrolled in community college baccalaureate in the other 24 states, now 25 that have it, are somewhere between 28 and 32. So it's interesting that you have enrollment among older students, 30-plus years old, that grew by 4.3% over the past year. So, so that's, again, another population that we can reach who are, you know, oftentimes tied to their community because of work or raising families in their community that don't have the luxury of going away to a public university to get, to get their degree. And then the last trend, of course, at the federal level, with the Trump administration, we've already seen changes as it relates to DEI, we've seen changes as it relates to, you know, Title IX. If you have a chance, you know, I certainly would encourage you to read all of the executive orders, at least the ones that are applicable to colleges, because they are, they are pretty far-reaching and pretty antagonistic just in terms of the language used in them. But certainly interesting to be aware of what's coming down, and certainly we anticipate more will be coming. So that will certainly potentially impact the landscape as well.
So Jim, we were talking about that earlier regarding some of those executive orders. But what is your take on how quickly we respond to executive orders?
I don't, I think collectively, I think it makes sense to just take a pause and sort of see, one, how these are rolled out, how quickly some of them go into effect. But I think there can be challenges to a good number of them. And then responding, you know, obviously as a system or as a state. So the president's, you know, collectively responding. I know some of the colleges have put statements out in response. I think keeping the students at the forefront of, of any of the comments certainly makes sense. But certainly, I think, you know, all this has happened in, what, a week? So I think it's, I think it's time to sort of just pause and see, you know, sort of where it all goes.
Well, in defense, my position, I think most of those executive orders were generated by AI. So. Completely artificial intelligence. And brings us back to 1951. I mean, really, where nobody had to worry about desktop computers or AI or anything else, or individual rights or anything like that. So that's it. I mean, it's just, some of the stuff and how it affects education, like you said here, the, you know, both of those paragraphs there, it just kind of like, it seems to be the right way to move for certain things going forward now in the matter of a week, throwing everybody into what's going on for the next year or two. So like you said, sit back, read as many as you can, take a breather between each one, you know, because you need a breath.
Make a few extra therapy appointments.
Yeah, I mean, and this isn't, it isn't even partisan stuff. I mean, some of this affects people who, you know, just, it affects our students, it affects our staff. And I'm just like, and if they're going to tag it to funding, you know, like years ago, this goes way back, when the federal government wanted to raise the legal drinking age, you know. They said, we're going to pull your highway funding if you don't raise it to 21. And it's kind of like, oh, okay, so everybody did it. There were a few holdouts, but then they missed some couple of years of federal funding, and then they, they raised the drinking age.
Right.
Okay.
I agree.
Go ahead.
Yep. So our last topic, Lobby Day. So our Lobby Day is scheduled for May 7th, a little bit later this year. But I think in light of the fact that the budget probably is not going to be resolved until the very end, and we probably need as much time as we can. May 7th is our date. We'll note that the students Lobby Day is on April 9th, so almost a month earlier. But they're going to have theirs, they originally have it But they're going to have theirs, they originally have it the same night as the PTK banquet, but unfortunately, the PTK banquet, on that night, the Senate is not in session. So they moved it to a different date. But certainly, as you prepare for Lobby Day, obviously learn about your, you know, college, the institution's mission, all those things, facts about the student population, the business community. I think this question about asking, you know, what are the needs of the community and how is a college responding to those changes is something that's good to sort of take with you, not only in DC, but certainly in Springfield. You know, your legislators are aware of the committee, but probably not always as aware in terms of the impact that the college has. So the more ways that you can show that the college is directly impacting and benefiting the community and meeting the changing needs of the community, the better in terms of that conversation.
Jim, I have a question regarding, I know Iktu has a lobby, lobbyists. We do as Illinois Community College Council of Presidents, right? But what is your take on individual community colleges having their own lobbyists as well?
Yeah, I mean, I really think it's about, you probably won't be surprised at this answer, but more about local control. But I do think there is some benefit to having someone who understands your individual needs as a college. And I think the more, the more programs, the more students, the more complex your colleges, I think that you may have greater needs for particular things. So in particular, you know, the legislation that was put forth by Representative West didn't apply to a lot of our smaller colleges, right? But it did apply, you know, to Rock Valley.
Right.
So, so there are things that come up. I know some of the colleges even have some ties to folks that lobby in Washington, you know, if they do a lot of grant work and AIH work and things like that. So it really sort of depends on that. Some I know do regional, have regional lobbyists that serve a particular area, South suburban area. So it just sort of depends on that need.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Certainly, as we move into February now, close, another five days, four days, contacting your legislator to go ahead and make those meetings. You know, legislators are going to be pretty far-stretched. I'm trying to think, who are your, who's your reps? Who are your reps?
Stotman, Bella, Wes.
Okay.
Wes.
So with the, the reason I ask is in terms of the Democrats, because they are, and/or Republicans, but the Republicans are stretched even more because of the supermajority, you have to have, you know, three or four Republicans each of those committees. And so those Republicans are really stretched thin on a lot of committees so that they can have that kind of balance. So, again, I say that to say you might contact them early to figure out what their schedule's like, get in a breakfast with them. You know, they've sort of trended toward not being in session much on those days when they know we're going to have Lobby Days, so we encourage them to sort of have that flexibility to meet with, you know, meet with the constituents. So we're, so call as early as you can and really sort of make those appointments.
I saw that Stotman was still a part of the Higher Education Committee.
Yes.
But I didn't see anybody else, like, from the House or anything, anybody, do you know?
The House, they haven't finished naming theirs yet, yeah.
That's what, okay.
Right.
Thank you.
And then taking February and March to do your research on your legislators, you know, any kind of personal notes that you know about them, positive personal notes, about them, you know, that you have relationships that you have with them that can be shared as part of your conversation, certainly always helps make that conversation a little more rich and engaging. And then Lobby Day, as you go in, you know, choose who's going to be your spokesperson. You know, where there was some talk, it's at one point about having the students have the same Lobby Day as the trustees. I think there was a sense that the students sort of have their own agenda in terms of topics that they're concerned about, that don't necessarily align with the trustees and/or presidents. So if you take a student, make sure that they are on the same page and same messages as you are. I talked with the students on Friday, and I know they're really focusing on mental health and then also insecurities, both housing and food insecurity. So not topics of ours, certainly ones we support and think are important for students. But again, you might have just a slightly different message if you have a student with you. And then certainly doing your follow-up after Lobby Day. They get lots of mail, lots of emails, so I think handwritten notes or calls are certainly the best way to get their attention if you, you know, want, so that it doesn't get lost, sort of lost in the shuffle. So, with that, I would certainly be open to any questions about this or other topics, but certainly, yeah.
Well, I don't have a question, it's more of a statement, so it's tied into this. So John Nelson, trustee Nelson, left for a former legislator's memorial service, Charles Chuck Jefferson. He left at 9:30 today, and Chuck was a friend of education, was a friend of the community, long-serving representative for the district. And I was planning on going to that service, but so to maintain a quorum here in respectful of all of your time, so we could have this meeting and move on with it, I, John went and is kind of representing both of us there. So, but Chuck was a friend of education, and I know we, our current state reps and current legislators have all been receptive to what RVC is doing. Do you find that in all of the districts? Or do you find that there's certain legislators that may not embrace education? And you don't have to name names.
Yeah, I wouldn't. But they all say they embrace education. I don't, I have not found a legislator, whoever says I'm anti-education, right? What I have found is that they may support their public university over their community college, rather than realizing that you meet different needs and serve different constituencies. So that's problematic sometimes when we find that they're putting one over the other rather than acknowledging the benefits that both bring to the community.
And they're likely breaking that down into financing and the greater good of one reach out of the other, or regional or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, again, that tends to be more regional, but I, again, I had not met a legislator who's, you know, says, "Don't give my, don't give my college, or don't give my, you know, district any resources." It manifests itself in different ways, but they certainly all, like I said, on paper, support education, so.
Okay. So Jim, I think that wraps up our questions. On behalf of the board and on behalf of the college, I want to thank you for taking time out of your weekend to come up here and present this information. I was asked, I would ask if we could have that in an email format. We have two trustees, unfortunately, that have medical issues that could not attend. And as you heard trustee Gorski talk about John Nelson going to a memorial service, but I think it'd be useful for us to have that, all of us to have it.
Absolutely.
Digest it some more and take heed with some of the issues you've raised. So thank you very much.
Thank you, my pleasure to come in. Thanks for having me, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And with that, I think a 10-minute break.
Sure.
Is in order. So we'll reconvene at, let's make it 10 after. Does that give us enough time to finish up?
It's been 10 minutes.
10 after.[1061.13]
Okay, we'll reconvene our meeting and I think our next presentation is Return on Investment Academic Program Report. And we do have a quorum when the trustees come in. Where's Kennedy and Simpson?
Do you want to wait until they actually?
We'll wait until they actually are here so we can conduct it properly.
So we have not officially reconvened.
We have not re-officially convened, even though I slammed the hammer down.
You were just getting our attention.
Yeah.
Quorum call, quorum call.
Pay attention to the clock.
But if I don't like what I hear, I'm leaving.
Okay.
It's all good. It's all good news.
Well, except for one, I think, I didn't like.
No, it's still good news.
There was one I didn't like.
I know.
No, which one you don't like?
Where's Kristin?
She went to restroom.
Yeah.
Well, you're supposed to do that when you first leave here. A quorum, so we will now proceed with our retreat.
Thank you, trustees. So Rock Valley College has made investments in several facilities and partnerships. So today, we are following our trend that we do yearly to examine 10-year annual trends for the programs in these different facilities. Enrollment is important to consider as one of the indicators of return on investment. I'd like us to recognize that enrollment has been impacted by several factors, including program capacity, labor market, and the lingering effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. The ACAC, A C E C opened, or the Aviation Career Education Center opened in fall of 2015. So that was the first facility we're talking about. If you scroll up a little bit, you'll be able to see that enrollment has grown since the A C E C opened. There is a slight dip, and that is during COVID. That actually is a trend you'll see throughout all of the enrollments because most of these programs, or all of these programs rely heavily on face-to-face instruction. And so we were limited in capacity during the parts of COVID. But we have grown in the past 10 years by 118% from 115 students to 251 students in FY '24. And so we continue to be at capacity or pretty close there, running cohorts morning, noon, and night.
Wow.
It's been a really great program for the college.
And they all get jobs when they're done?
Pardon?
And they all get jobs when they're done?
They do all get jobs when they're done, and actually, you know, we are up for an award with AACC because of our partnership with AAR. So it's very exciting.
Oh, great.
So the next one is perhaps trustee Trojan's favorite, NIU.
I don't like that one.
At RVC Engineering. So this kind of we're looking at since the renovation of the building we're in right now in fall of 2016. It included a partnership with NIU, which allows students to earn their associate's degree here in engineering and then continue to earn a bachelor's in engineering from NIU. As you can see, we did see a growth from 2016 to 2020 for a high enrollment of 278. Since then, there's been a decline with currently FY '24, we were at 167. I think it is really important for us to note that while there were 167 students with their degree intent of the Associate of Engineering Science, there were actually 230 unduplicated enrollments in engineering courses, which shows potentially that students may be enrolling in Associate of Science degrees, intending to transfer with those degrees instead of an Associate of Engineering Science. So.
To add to that, our program here, the two plus two at NIU, is focused on mechanical engineering. Right. And so a lot of students may want to go. The original program was supposed to have like four or five different engineering offerings.
Right, right.
And so to get it going, for whatever reason, NIU decided to focus here on the main campus, on our main campus, on mechanical. But they had electrical, they had industrial, chemical, and there was a besides mechanical, and there was another one, I can't think of it right now.
Yeah, civil. My son's looking at civil. He's going through, he's going to wrap up next year. I mean, his second stint here. He's not really interested in mechanical engineering, but he's going to probably move through it. But his real goal is civil engineering, which means probably Southern Illinois or going up into Wisconsin someplace. But, you know, by the time he's 35, he might be done with all of it. So. And that's the thing, I mean, and I know you're laughing at that, but I know a lot of you have gone through your PhD programs and stuff, and you've got them over an extended period of time. And when you're done, you feel, you know, it's successful, but, you know. And he's not in a particular hurry, but it's just, he would have really loved just to have civil engineering because of, well, his drawing skills and stuff that he brought here from high school and stuff, and his mapping is an idea. And I talked to a couple other students who are in the same situation where they're going to finish it up just because it's nice to have that, you know, degree and then, you know, and then move on. Because even with mechanical engineering, you could move into a building trades if you wanted to and go on an apprenticeship program and then in five or six years be making, you know, really good money too. So that works. And that's another thing with the mechanical engineering, is there any, or even some of the coursework, any partnership with any of the building trades like sheet metal workers or anything like that? Because they need those types of, you know, that's the type of stuff that they teach sometimes is part of their own training. So if working in industry doesn't work out, they could go into, you know, a trade and apply what they learned. So.
So we have a. Well, we have a strong apprenticeship program. You can speak to that or.
Yeah, we do have, we offer apprenticeships with IBEW and with sheet metal and with our.
Our RVTME.
Our RVTMA, Rock River Valley Machining and Chilling. So we do offer those. And so you make a really good point that these are students that are taking courses that aren't specifically in the Associate of Engineering Science, but they are still being positively affected by the courses we offer here. I really think that the next table is a really good depiction of when we look at it more holistically, not specifically the Associate of Engineering Science, but those students who are enrolled in engineering courses. Yes?
So is a prerequisite for someone to go into the NIU to engineering degree, is it prerequisite to have an associate degree?
I believe so, yes.
But it does not need to be an Associate of Engineering Science.
No, they can have an AS and do the NIU portion if they have the appropriate prerequisite.
Prereq, yeah.
Prereq, not necessarily an engineering associate degree.
Correct.
Right, so I think a lot of the initial purpose was for them to do the Associate of Engineering Science, but some choose not to do that and do the AS. As long as they have the right courses, they could still go to the NIU program, but they also have flexibility to go to other institutions.
Yeah. Because if a prerequisite was a degree to get into NIU, then that previous chart would be not so good.
Right.
Really would not be so good.
Right, and that's why I think this one is important to look at because they could also have an Associate of Science.
Orange line there is sort of like flat.
Yeah, just starting to see a little uptick. We do anticipate that, you had asked for opportunities for growth in some areas. And so we do anticipate there may be some positive growth based on the press conference that was held this past week about Rockford Promise with the agreements between RVC and NIU for them to be able to take our students seamlessly and continue to reap the rewards of Rockford Promise.
Okay.
All right.
You appease me for now.
Okay, thank you. For now, I heard.
Whoa, man, my day's made. I can go home. I say, honey, Bob Trojan's happy.
No, he's appeased, not happy.
There's a difference between.
Okay, so moving along to Health Science Center. The Health Sciences Center, that building was launched in July of 2017. There are various programs housed there, including nursing, CNA, fire science, and the OSF St. Anthony's College of Nursing. So enrollments in the nursing program have remained fairly steady, excepting for that dip that we mentioned would, you would see continually throughout this because of COVID. They are running all cohorts. For a while there, they had to bring in new students only once, once a year as opposed to during every semester. Now we're back up where we are bringing in new students in a new cohort every single semester. So we continue to see some good enrollments there. There are several other programs such as dental hygiene, phlebotomy, respiratory care, and medical assistant. There was surgical tech, and we had sunset that for a time. Enrollments have remained steady in all of those programs except for surgical tech, which I had mentioned, we had sunset that program based on our labor market data at the time, and the addition of the medical assistant degree. And so with each new program, it takes some time to get going. We currently have nine students enrolled in the medical assistant program here at Rock Valley College. Okay, I'll get to what I was going to say. Next, we look at the certified nursing assistant. Enrollment had been declining based on some different challenges in funding for students. But as you can see, it's now getting a steady climb again. That may be due to some grant funding that's available to help support students' tuition as well as we owe a funding. We've also been able to add in some early college sections, so some of that dual credit that has been mentioned earlier, which is helping with that. Lastly, we talk about fire science over at the HSC or Health Science Center. There was a decline that started actually before COVID, and that was due to some changes in the requirements from the state fire marshal certification. And state training for fire department employees was offered for free due to a FEMA contract. And so that's, you know, had a pretty, maybe not statistically significant, but it definitely had.
Impact.
Caused a challenge. Yes, correct. And but we are now seeing that we're starting to see a rise in that. And we'll have to, you know, see why that occurred and hopefully will continue. So we're excited to see also how the addition of the fire tower will continue to impact our program. In order for us to see other opportunities for growth in the health sciences, it would be possibly an addition of another program. Otherwise, we are co-horted, and so we are limited based on the size of the programs as well as opportunities for clinicals within our community.
So when it comes to health sciences, we're more, it's more about sustainability than always seeing the growth.
Yeah.
Right?
Correct. That is correct. We do always remain aware of what the labor market needs are in our area. For instance, I had mentioned that we had seen a decline in the, in the need for surgical tech. When we sunset that, we did keep all of our equipment so that in case there's an uptick again, we would be able to start up that program again, and that would help us increase some enrollment. Yes, trustee?
Paul. So, yeah, trustee makes me feel like I'm in jail.
I'm sorry. I don't want that.
I've been a trustee in four different units of government, always made me feel like I was in jail. But in terms of the medical professional fields, are there any that you're seriously looking at? And if you're not, I mean, if it's just kind of speculative and you're not really close to anything, don't mention it. This though, doesn't get out there. But is there anything else that you're looking at?
Not at this, at this time, we wanted to kind of make sure that what we have going, the newer ones, get stronger. If anything, we would look at surgical tech, as I mentioned.
Okay.
The good news is that the programs are strong. We've, in the last year, we've had several of the program accreditation visits.
Correct.
And they've come out pretty much with strong or positive reports, correct?
That is correct. In fact, we have our next visit in February for ASN, which is our nursing accreditation. But we, I think you're referring to recently we received our respiratory care accreditation and pass it with flying colors. We have, you know, really strong programs that I'm very proud of.
Good. I've heard nothing bad about any of those programs. That's great.
Okay. Lastly, I'd like to talk about the Advanced Technology Center. This is the latest facility that was launched. I do want to point out that this, whereas you heard about the non-credit programs in the presentation that Dr. Stewart presented earlier, I wanted to talk about specifically our credit programs at the ATC. Mechatronics is our newest program, and that has just done really, really well, beginning with only 10 students in 2020, up to 135 students in FY '24. So that's been a great growth. It continues to grow. And welding continues to grow very strongly as well. There was the dip, as we all see, due to COVID, but scheduling has allowed us to see a growth in enrollment by 47%. And we do offer some cohorts for early college. And otherwise, it's really strategic scheduling to utilize that space as much as possible.
I know Dr. Stewart talked about CNC in his presentation, but it'd be kind of nice to see CNC in this presentation too because we bought a lot of equipment. We made a lot of investment for CNC. So it'd be interesting to see the trend charts on that one too.
Can I remember any discussion on that?
Next time you do it.
Okay, I will make that recommendation to Heather Snyder, who does all the data work.
Okay, well, very good. I think it's, it's always good to reflect back on the investments we've made and what kind of basically return are we getting vis a vis the enrollment. If the enrollment's going up, that means we've invested wisely. If the numbers are going down enrollment-wise, that means maybe we made a poor investment.
We're very excited.
Or something else is going on.
Well, I'm excited, you know, you know, post-dip, looks like the numbers are at or significantly above, you know, than the previous numbers, which is great. The mechatronics is, you know, from 10 up to whatever, ramping up and flattening out. That's probably just because of capacity here, isn't it? Yeah, which is fine. You're at about 150, what was it?
Yeah.
154?
On 35.
35, okay. That's great.
And we're looking forward to being able to include RVC Downtown West in future iterations of this as well. So.
Correct.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Before we go into the next presentation, I believe you had an EAV question.
Yes, I have an answer to the EAV question.
Wow, you spent that 10 minutes wisely.
No, I don't need the answer. So a 1% reduction in EAV translates to about $234,000 in tax revenue.
Oh, okay.
So it's not a big deal. I mean, basically, in the big picture.
Well, additive, no. By itself, no. If you had a perfect storm, you got 335,000, I heard, from the state, and potentially then you add this, you're a half a mil to 600,000 that we'd need to, you know, somehow, you know, plan for, you know, accommodate. But yeah, we could do that. Thanks for the follow-up. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Home exam is completed. You're done. If I had a little star, put it on your computer.
Okay, next up.
Hello again. We're coming kind of full circle now. So we've talked about the state of the college, some historical information, financial information, program information. And now we're going to talk about our strategic plan. And more specifically, we'll get into some of the employee culture pieces of that plan. I know everyone's familiar with the four pillars, but I like to start each of the. I know everyone's familiar with the four pillars, but I like to start each of the strategic plan updates with a reminder that we're focused on access, exceptional educational opportunities, exceptional training opportunities, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. The State of the College presentation included several slides that showed progress toward our strategic plan scorecard targets. So I'm not going to reiterate all those metrics here. Instead, I'm going to show some achievements from 2024. This table demonstrates how these achievements align with the strategic plan pillars. The outcome of our HLC site visit provides evidence that we are addressing all four pillars of our strategic plan. Institutional accreditors do not tell institutions what their mission and strategic plans must include. Rather, they require evidence that the activities, programs, and budgets are aligned with the missions and plans created by the institution. One requirement of accreditation, however, is that the institution provides evidence of the quality of academic programs, which is what we refer to as exceptional educational opportunities. And of course, as you know, we had a successful site visit with no monitoring, so we've met all the HLC criteria in addition to our strategic plan pillars at the same time. RVC's exceptional education is also evidenced by student success. For example, the past 10 years have shown improvements in on-time completion rates and increases in graduation rates across racial and ethnic groups. RVC's pivotal project for expanding access to education and training is the construction of RVC Downtown West and the corresponding placement of key programs at that location. In the meantime, access to training has been enhanced by workforce programs such as collision repair, which Dr. Stewart talked about earlier. The Salesforce CRM has also been an effective access tool by streamlining our enrollment processes and our communication flows. And some of the success is evidenced by increases in our credit hour enrollment and student success, which we talked about earlier with the State of the College. RVC's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion has resulted in a few recognitions, and I can't, I don't have time to talk about all the great work that we've done to get those recognitions, but it's culminated in the Higher Education Excellence in Diversity Award and also the recognition of Rock Valley College as a Hispanic-serving institution. DEI efforts on the operations side have allowed us to exceed the targets for contracts awarded to business enterprise program vendors, which we talked about earlier, having met the 21%. Still not quite at that aspirational goal, but it's, it represents some good work that the college has done. So I want to focus a little bit on employee culture as one of the aspects of our strategic plan. One of the strategic goals under the DEI pillar is to improve the campus culture by establishing cultural competence, trust, a sense of belonging among employees and learners, and accessibility to working and learning environments. In addition, the training pillar includes a goal to provide high-quality training and professional development for our own employees. The Employee Culture Survey administered in fall of 2021 and fall of 2023 has been a key measure of these goals. This slide is just a reminder of the targets that we've met from the State of the College. And now I'm going to invite Dr. Huntley up to talk more specifically about employee culture.
Good morning. I have the opportunity to be able to present to you an update of our cultural survey results. Just as a reminder, this cultural survey is offered every two years. And as you can see from our results, with the exception of three categories, we've had increases or gains in responses from our employees. With regard to the three categories, that there were no gains is because we did not ask those questions within the first year that we were offering. And so I think it is a good testament to the opportunities that we take to be able to receive feedback and to make sure that we are applying that and coming up with plans to be able to make sure our employees know that we value the information that they present to us.
Oh, question.
Oh, excuse me.
When do you do the next survey?
So in the next two years, so we'll look at 2020.
So this year sometime.
Yes, this year.
Fall semester? Fall semester?
Is this the same one we saw last year then at the board treat?
Yes, this is an update, yes.
This is, this is a different one or the same one as last year?
It's the same as last year because we haven't had an addition.
Got it, okay.
Done every two years.
Okay. And then, what percentage of the employees responded to the survey?
That is a great question.
We can get back to it varied by division, but it was.
Just overall, just overall.
I can't guess, but it was, I can tell you it was a good response rate.
Okay. Just, I don't know if it's appropriate here, especially with the bargaining units we had, but maybe an incentive to, a percentage rate, not as an individual, but as an institution to do it like, well, we used to, at the ADA, they used to give an extra day off or a half flex day or something like that to everybody that they could schedule working with their, but you know, but then you've got bargaining units and stuff. Figure out some type of incentive to read a, reach an institutional percentage goal, you know? And we got, our first year was like 80, I think they're targeted 88%, then they targeted 92%. I think they got 93 or 94% one year, which is phenomenal, but then you saw flattening of the pluses, because the people that were apathetic, that didn't apply, didn't fill out the form because they weren't happy, then it kind of leveled things out. But it didn't drop, it just kind of plateaued, so. But the, and whatever incentive might be appropriate for an institution of different job positions and stuff, might be a donut day, I don't know.
Yeah, no, it's a good idea, though. We look at different incentives, but yeah, that's, if we could get 100%, that would be a, we need to have a very good incentive for that.
You could put that in the goal that we haven't talked about yet. That would be phenomenal. You get 100% response on any survey. That, I mean, put that on your resume, man.
And with the help of phone a colleague, we had 50% response rate overall and 77% response rate for our full-time employees, to answer your question.
85.
4% increase from 2021, it's 46% in 2021, 50%.
That's good. That increase is good.
If you know survey research, if you're getting more than 20%.
I used to do survey research, yes. Director of Male Marketing, and our response rate was typically higher than other ones because we made, got it enticing. So I would try to target 80, 85, because when you, when you don't have, if you don't have a large, you know, a large segment like that, you don't know how they really feel. They may be lazy but happy, or lazy and not happy, or somewhere in between, so. And make it worth their while and, like again, some type of incentive, I don't know, you know, but.
Is it electronic or is it paper form when they do it?
Electronic.
Electronic.
Do you think people worry about the confidentiality when they're doing it electronically, that it's really not confidential?
We don't, yes. I think they were concerned about, they expressed that concern the first year, but the second year, we did it through Studer Education.
Yeah.
So we did third-party so that we didn't get the information directly.
But there's still that, like, well, Jaden didn't get it, but.
Oh, there's always going to be that.
Yes, right.
Yeah. There'll always be a feeling, but I know amongst leadership.
I always put my name in it so they know who did it, though.
Amongst leadership, we encourage, you know, and continue to help the employees understand the importance and value of that to reassure them. Thank you. Thank you so much, both of you, for your feedback. One more thing that I want to put on this slide, with two of the newer questions, the employee net promoter score, as you noticed, there is a difference in the scoring range, whereas the other questions are on a survey scale from one to four. These scales are from negative 100 to positive 100. And so as we see, we scored 23.40 and 6.75, which both arrange in that 0 to 30, which is good, but provides us opportunity for continual growth and improvement. So I just wanted to point that out. And with that being said, I'll move on to the next slide. We want to obviously continue to grow, and so we have taken action steps as a leadership team to be able to do so. One of those being that we stream the Committee of the Hole and Board of Trustees meetings, which we know anecdotally just from our employees that they're watching. And so this has provided opportunity for enhanced participation in the process and being able to be knowledgeable about what's happening at the college.
On the website, you can go in there and see all the different meetings, and you can see how many people have looked at it. And it's pretty consistent, I think, between 60 to 75 per meeting have actually watched the stream of each different meetings since we started.
Right. They're not always on live, but then they go back and watch.
Yeah, well, this is probably once it's on, on the internet.
But they're watching reruns of our meetings?
There you go.
Well, I don't know. I don't know if that counts. Does it count when they're watching it or after it's been posted, after the meeting?
I don't think it counts in their life. I think it has to be viewed.
Pardon?
If it's a YouTube, are we storing the video then?
It's YouTube.
Well, then you'd be able to see in the YouTube stats how many people have actually kind of viewed your video.
That's what he's talking about. It's in the YouTube that he's seeing 60 people.
I don't know if it means, though, that people watched it live. Do you count that? Or after it's over and they go in and watch it?
Right.
I watched the December 17th meeting live, and that was between 9:00 and 11:00. So I'm guessing that if on the website, you're seeing 50 to 60 or more, that may be the count of individual viewings when it's, I mean, after.
After the meeting is over.
Which, which is fine for me. I mean, just like we publish, you know, the minutes or the agenda in advance, we had some people participating at the actual time, but if some people want to go back and actually review the video, that's still participation as far as I'm concerned. And I still think, as Bob and I regularly do, remind the public, you know, that, you know, the sausage gets made during the Committee of the Hole meeting, so.
Yes, thank you. In addition, we have been publishing leadership updates, so the leadership updates that are presented at the Board of Trustees meetings are published so that our employee base has access to be able to view those and to know what's going on. And once again, anecdotally, I know in my department, they've said, wow, they really pay attention, they care about what we're doing. So those leadership updates are really helpful in just validating the great opportunities and work that our employee base has been doing. In addition, we've had the opportunity to visit various RVC locations, and this helps with a sense of belonging for all of our locations to understand that there is value to our city, to our community, and all the work that's not just being done in the Moleford location, but also with our other locations as well. And finally, we have implemented our service excellence surveys. We've conducted those, and we are going to do this in a process. So the first two entities or divisions that underwent these were HR, so Human Resources, and our Institutional Effectiveness and Communications Departments. And so with that, I'm going to transition to let you know the results. And so overall, as you see our, the results by division, it was scaled from one to five, one being very poor and five being very good. And so we were pleased with the results, but we know that there is opportunity for growth as well. And so in each one of these areas, service delivery, customer focus, positive interactions, solutions focus, and helping attitude, each one of our overall divisions were scored. But additionally, our divisions were scored by categories. And so we had the opportunity to look at specific categories within each one of our divisions. For Human Resources specifically, we looked at benefits, our HR, business professionals, our professional development team, and onboarding. One of the things I think that's really important for us to consider whenever we are looking at this, these results, is the opportunity for communication. And what I mean by that is the opportunity for our employees to understand what each of these entities do. And sometimes there are opportunities where there is a need, and, you know, process-wise, they're asking, well, what is the process? How do I get through that? And so we have been taking the opportunities, and this was already starting, to make sure that we are increasing our communication on the internet and also making sure that we are using our standard operating procedures so that employees have the opportunity to truly understand what those processes are, what they can expect from the process whenever there is a specific or designated need. It has also given us the opportunity to be able to increase cross-training. So whenever there is a specific need, we have opportunities and more individuals can meet that need. For example, with regards to benefits, the more individuals who know about the FMLA or ADA process, the more that we can help to inform and help that employee to be able to meet, go through the process and make sure that their needs are met. And finally, I'll just note that with onboarding, one of the things that's really important as far as that communication stream and just increasing that is that it is not just an HR function, but it's a campus-wide function. So there's a piece that IT takes apart in, there's a piece that other departments take apart in, and as we help to enforce that communication so that everyone understands what each one of those pieces are through standard operating procedures, not only are we looking at increasing the communication stream, but also making sure that we're increasing efficiencies. So are there ways that we can automate processes and continue to help our employees at a state of excellence? And without further ado, if there are no questions regarding this? Yes, sir?
So regarding FMLA education, you do it at onboarding or at the beginning of, okay?
So there is opportunity at onboarding and our new employee orientation, we provide that information as well, yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any re-education, retraining, opportunity to remind people what your opportunities are under FMLA?
Sure. One opportunity that we are currently taking right now is through our Supervisor 201 Training, where we are training supervisors so that more often than not, when an employee has a question, they're going to go to their supervisor first to be able to ask, what are the starting steps or how do they begin? And we provide that opportunity. So that's one. The other is we are providing opportunities for increased access, if you will, to Human Resources so that if someone has a question, it may go to a couple of individuals within HR so that we can get to them quickly and expeditiously and make sure that we're providing that opportunity, and then continue to reinforce, making sure that we, they know that we care about them and that if they have questions or if there is a concern regarding the process that we are walking with them step by step.
Who would I talk to? I'm an employee now, putting my employee hat on. Who would I talk to about FMLA that's not a brick of time in a row?
Would you mind repeating that question one more time?
I'm an employee, so I'm asking this question. Who would I talk to about FMLA options that isn't necessarily a brick, solid brick of time of taking leave?
Well, with any of the FMLA processes, you would start with our benefits coordinator, and so that would be the first point of contact. Besides just kind of getting the assessment of what the need is, that person will also need to assess the amount of FMLA time that is available, whether it's intermittent or whether it's continuous. So the process is always going to start with that individual.
But let them also know your strategy.
But you have, you answered the question. You have a point person to take the initial questions and disseminate the information and move forward. That's fine. A lot of organizations, one, they don't know about intermittent, and two, they may not know who to hand it off to, but if you got a point person and you're already aware of the couple of the options that you have and the questions and the forms that they'll need to fill out, that's, that's all you really need. It's just letting staff know, probably before they need it somehow, a reminder of that, that these are, these are an option, you know, because in some institutions have been that, people didn't even realize that this was an opportunity to them and their supervisors didn't. So it's a good start to have the supervisors educated on, they come to their supervisor with the question, and the supervisor punts it up to the person that you mentioned. That's fine with me. That works great.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Just a question for Heather. Where are we with the HLC certification?
So we.
We'll transition. Thank you.
Because I have a little bit more in this presentation, too.
So, but with our, we have received a letter from HLC that the Institutional Actions Council has approved the recommendation to reaffirm Rock Valley College's accreditation for 10 years. We do not have any monitoring at all.
Wow.
So yay. Yes, with no monitoring.
Have we ever had a time where we had?
Not in the time that I've been here. I couldn't speak to, you know, 30 years ago, 40, 60 years ago, but, but I have never been at an institution who received a reaffirmation without any monitoring. So that includes Rock Valley College and others, another institution.
Plastered all over the place.
Right. We meet, yes, we have to have some big announcement. We also have the option, I was going to save this for later, but since we're talking now, the option to choose our pathway. So when you have a clean review like that, you have the option to choose either a standard or an open pathway. So that is something we're considering at this time.
Wow, that's great. Great news. Congratulations, everybody.
Thank you.
That's her, Paul.
Somebody pass along congratulations to Dr. Mayling for the work on that program.
I still have lunch with Dr. Mayling.
Tell her I say hi and I thank her for her efforts.
I will. Thank you for saying that, because it was a lot of work and she. I will, thank you for saying that, because it was a lot of work and she was the leader of that project, so, thank you. I do want to take a few minutes to go over the results from the Institutional Effectiveness and Communications portion of the Service Excellence Survey. All of our scores were above a 3.6 out of 5, with 5 being the highest, and so I see that as a pretty good result, as well as the HR result. I did note, though, some areas of improvement that we can work on, much like Dr. Huntley had, the first of which is what the heck is Institutional Effectiveness and Communications? So many, many people commented that they, they had a difficult time rating that division because they either didn't interact or didn't have a good knowledge of what that division did. So that is one action step that I'm going to take is to, even if you don't need to interact, you should at least have a fundamental understanding of the divisions of the college. So not wanting to assume that everybody here has a full understanding, the different categories are there, but Institutional Effectiveness and Communication includes Assessment and Accreditation, which you're familiar with, the accreditation piece of that, but in addition, that's Assessment of Student Learning Outcomes, which is a key portion of accreditation, Strategic Planning, which you probably knew because that's what the Board is most focused on from this division, but also Marketing and Communications, so any of the work of John Thompson's team as well, Grant Support, so mostly finding grant opportunities and sharing those with other individuals and helping people through that process of applying for a grant, and then making sure they're staying on top of regular reporting, et cetera. And then finally, Institutional Research, which is any state compliance reporting to ICCB, which then feeds to IPADS, but also other internal research questions, like the State of the College information. So that is one takeaway I have is to better communicate that to the college. Much like Dr. Huntley said, I think a lot of our takeaways are related to communication and making sure that people understand the role of this unit, but also the priorities of the unit and the college. Some feedback I received was they, that people maybe didn't get the response that they wanted, but we need to do a better job, like if they've requested data, or they've requested marketing or communications or grant access, we need to do a better job of explaining what priorities are and why or why not, we can do this right now, when can we do this, and so people just understand the work of the division and the timeline for requesting information. People also want faster access to information, which I get, because everybody wants the data at their fingertips, so we're going to work on improvements to that, so maybe you don't, maybe being more proactive instead of reactive so that before somebody requests information that they should have to do their job or make decisions, we've already made that available to them. And also, we're going to be working on refining our grant process. As you've probably guessed, our grants have just exponentially grown over the past couple of years. I know Dr. Stewart's feeling that, and because there's so many Career and Technical Education and Workforce Grants, the Finance Department's feeling that because obviously they have a huge role in the financial implications, so we're just trying to refine our processes so we can be the best stewards of the money we're receiving and also go after more opportunities.
Good.
So the next steps with the, both the Culture Survey and with the Support Service Excellence work, which contribute to improvements in employee culture, we mentioned the next Culture Survey will be administered in fall of 2025, we'll continue to roll out the success, the Service Excellence surveys with different units of the college, and as we kind of described today, we always reflect then and develop action steps, so then we'll have to remeasure, so it's a continuous improvement cycle, much like any of our strategic planning initiatives Are there any other questions related to strategic plan or the culture work we've been doing?
Oh, just a little bit of a freebie here, your little chart here reminds me of many years ago, working in a large corporation, the CEO came out with a planning program, and it was Plan, Organize, Implement, Measure. So your little chart there refreshed my memory about that years ago. You're pretty close, Plan, Organize, Implement, Measure.
Yeah, I mean, it's all about the continuous improvement, whether you work in manufacturing, education, it's the same process.
There you go, thank you very much, Heather.
Thank you.
And now we have.
I think it's the, it's the Future of Higher Ed, is that? I have handouts, so I'm going to give those out before I get started.
Okay. Strengths, weaknesses, or opportunities and threats.
Sure. Anyone have a question?
No, oh, there you go, it's up there too, it's good.
Thank you.
Yep.
If I leave the meeting briefly for just a brief recess, can they continue and still be meeting their quorum requirement?
There would not be a quorum.
I know.
We don't have a quorum, we're not taking any action on anything today, so.
Okay.
Very involved, any challenges, it's a debate, not very.
I just have to step out, I got a minor emergency at the jail, so.
I need to, I need to say we are no longer in quorum.
No one wants to hear that. You better take care of that.
Step down, when he return, and that's recent.
Okay, so before you go, Heather, Trustee Gorski has excused himself for some short time, so we are not in quorum right now, but we're not taking any action.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This last discussion item stems from questions that were submitted in relation to State of the College, so it kind of brings today's discussion items full circle. The questions we received were around what the different potential weaknesses or challenges or threats may be to Rock Valley College, and that kind of extends to higher education in general. So we thought we'd address those questions by doing a full SWAT analysis to present strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, along with some strategies targeted towards those weaknesses and threats.
Jim, did you get one of these handouts? Make sure you get this one, you'd be interested.
So in my experience, many people confuse the internal and external components of a SWAT analysis, so I'm just going to explain those, even though I think people understand every time somebody nods and says they know, when you start getting the feedback, you realize they really don't. So just briefly, as a reminder, a SWAT analysis looks at both internal and external factors. Internal factors are those that are within the control of the institution, so strengths are positive characteristics of an institution which contribute to success, weaknesses are those characteristics which may inhibit success but we have control over. External components of the SWAT include the opportunities and the threats. So an opportunity is a positive environmental factor that could contribute to success if we were to take advantage of that opportunity. And a threat is something external to our control that could have a negative consequence to our success. So talking about strengths, I'm not going to go over all of these in detail because I did that in the Strategic Plan Update just a few minutes ago, but these are the successes that I shared over the past year that have contributed to the strengths of the college. The one I'll point out now, though, is the first one, which is our Stability and Leadership and Finances, which we've had, since Dr. Speerman's presidency, we've had strong stability at the Cabinet level and other administrative levels, so of course that contributes to our success moving forward. And as we know with the financial forecasts, we've had stability, we're in a good financial position, even if we do have to deal with some external factors. So those are the strengths that we see for Rock Valley College. Some weaknesses include, as we know, our Board Policy Manual is in need of updates, and that's very important because that helps us run and function as a college, but we know that our administration is working with trustees and with legal counsel to make those updates so that we can be stronger moving forward. The retirement of long-term employees, we've had a few recently, that can always be a weakness just because they hold such institutional knowledge and strength in their leadership and work, but we are working through Dr. Huntley's area and Human Resources to improve our talent acquisition process and our onboarding process that she spoke about earlier, so when we do bring in new employees, we're getting the highest quality talent that we can and being able to acclimate them to Rock Valley College as seamlessly as possible. We recognize a need for more standard operating procedures. I would say it's a weakness right now, we do have some, but we could use more, and we are in process, every Vice President is working with their area to document more of our procedures, so that when you do lose an employee, the procedure doesn't leave with them and we can seamlessly continue our, our work.
Is there a risk of too many procedures that would stifle creativity?
I like to think of a procedure as, you know, not as, some need to be very specific, task, you know, step by step, but I like to think that they're flexible, so if somebody saw improvements that could be made, they could be revised. So I don't think they stifle creativity. You know, when I have new employees and I go, okay, this is how I have always done this, but if you have a better way, tell me, and then we can revise a procedure.
I guess it'd just be something to be cautious of, that you don't over-proceduralize everything so that everybody can't be creative in some respects.
That's a legit concern.
Yeah.
It's just that, being a public institution and everything's transparent and everybody's trying to come, find a way to, you know, we're in a sue-happy environment and culture, and so, well, we are, and so when an issue happens, you look at the Board Policy, you look at the administrative procedures, and then we look to see if there are any SOPs that are addressing that, because the first thing they ask us is, did you follow procedure? Did you follow protocol? And it's like, well, we don't have one on that one, we give people flexibility. Well, and sometime when it comes to legal issues, giving people flexibility is considered a weakness, it's a gap, and then they come after you. And I hate to say it like that, but it's, it's, it's true, right? So we have to have at least, what we try to do is, here are the procedures, here's your outline, this is the framework that you should work within, but we also realize that every situation will not fit that procedure, or that procedure and SOP doesn't fit that. So now, what we're trying to do is get our team to have the conversation, all right, it doesn't fit, we don't have a procedure, what is it that you want to do? Talk to your supervisor, talk to your VP, let's figure it out together versus that old mentality of do whatever you want to do and get your hand slapped later, you know what I mean? We're trying to stop people from doing that so much and have this open dialogue as we move forward. I'm sorry, maybe that went on a rant, but.
Good answer.
It's just a point, to be cautious that you don't over-proceduralize everything so that you negate any creativity. Guidelines would be a better way of saying procedure.
Yeah.
Guidelines instead of procedures. Procedures are very rigid, guidelines, you know, you've got a little bit more room for judgment. Anyway, proceed.
Okay. The last weakness I want to note is the equity gaps that I mentioned earlier, specifically with student success. We are, we have several strategies in place to address equity gaps, but I just want to highlight one, which is our Caring Campus Initiative that the trustees did vote on earlier this year because there was an expense associated, but that project is coming out of the CAO's office and determining which course sections have good completion rates, and then learning from the faculty who teach those sections how their strategies and their work could be applied elsewhere so that we can achieve higher course completion rates that are equitable across the college. I think Dr. Speerman's going to join us and talk a little bit about the opportunities that we have.
He's a good guy.
Yes, ma'am. So, again, when we look at these different opportunities, what we're considering are positive environmental factors that create potential for success, right? So when we looked at opportunities, we thought that the new dual credit offerings and agreements, definitely is a place where we can explore more, we can be more creative, continue to strengthen our partnership with our K-12 partners. We are, we already know we have a strong dual credit program, but how do we explore more with career technical education? How do we explore more, not just in K-12, but in our adult education population and things of that nature? So how do we expand and look at that for dual credit? So there are opportunities for creativity and for growth. Jim spoke about the course numbering, common course numbering. Students, many of our students already struggle with transferring to and from institutions. Trustee Simpson, you mentioned, you made a very good point regarding your son, and not really interested in going to the four-year institution right away. And many of our students, and many four-year graduates come back to the two-year institution. Maybe they come to us for a program we have, then they go to a different one for another program they have for career advancement all along the way. So right now, the President's Council, we're really looking at, well, what if we start with the General Education Core Courses and get those to a place of common core, or common numbering, course numbering? So that when the student takes English 101 at Rock Valley College, that English 101 is the same English 101 that transfers between two-year institutions in Illinois. There's a cumbersome process that people don't know about, that when your transcripts get submitted to each institution, our registrar and their team has to go through this process and look, and it's, it takes a lot longer than people know. So this would clean up a lot, it would unify the Illinois Community Colleges, and once we get to that point, it makes more sense to then work with the four-years to clean up the transfer process for our two-years transferred to the four-year, so that the four-years don't just get to say, well, that doesn't quite satisfy that, you're missing a competency, so now we want you to take another four-credit class that we've already cleaned up. So there's some opportunity there that's not just beneficial, beneficial for Rock Valley College, but it's also beneficial for Illinois Community Colleges, and if we get this right, it'll be beneficial for students in the state of Illinois, and that's the goal. We spoke about, earlier about the Community College Baccalaureate Degrees. We have been constantly speaking about declining enrollments and in K-12, and what are some other ways that we can continue to sustain or grow Community Colleges? Well, the whole premise behind Community Colleges is that we're supporting our region, right? So, and that means from students in our region to industry partners in our region, how do we support them? One of the ways is to identify the Baccalaureate Degrees or the programs, the Baccalaureate for, the Bachelor's Degree of Applied Science, in areas that our four-year institutions and partners do not service. So, and, so how can we do that? And we know that we already produce a quality program and degree, and can we do this? And this is not, we're not the first ones to start this. States like Washington, maybe Indiana, was it Indiana, it was Washington, and who? Florida, I've been working and have developed these and led the way, and it's successful, and we think we can do this as well without competing with the degrees that have been established in our region, so that's the goal. So that is one of the priorities, legislative priorities of the Illinois Community College Presidents, so you will continue to hear more about that. Jim also talked about Lobby Day, and we, meaning Rock Valley College, we really just started. started getting really involved with Lobby Day. We, we really haven't, we have not taken it to the next level and really talked to, we have, so there's like two, like April 9th is Student Lobby Day, where the students go and talk to legislators. And then, May 7th, I believe, is the Lobby Day for community colleges, right? And then, in February, we have the federal, the ACCT Legislative Summit, which also has a Lobby Day for Congress. And so, we as an institution, this is an opportunity for us to be more strategic in going to their place, not always just calling our legislators when we want something from them, but develop the relationship with them and go see them in their space and be strategic about what we're asking versus just being prepared to answer the random question. So we need, we will continue to focus on this space and develop more strategy around Lobby Day events. I think this is the third year that we established an Illinois Community Caucus and down in Springfield, and that has been, that's actually been well-received, where the community colleges come together, legislators come into Springfield. Last year, Governor Pritzker spoke, and it was a great turnout, but Rock Valley College needs to be more present because our legislators are the ones that are extremely present when it comes to a lot of these different laws and things of that nature. So look at hiring the lobbyists.
Before we go, are there any plans to have another legislative meeting like we did, I think, a year or two ago, with not only the legislators who, whose territory covers Rock Valley College, but also those who are not in the college map? In other words, people like John Cabella. But he's got voters. Chesney isn't in our map, in our college map, but he has voters. And I'm thinking also, why not invite the mayors of all the municipals and have one show and tell as to what we're doing and how they could help us through their efforts, through their various efforts? I mean, it's just an idea, but I thought it worked pretty well a year ago when we did it with the legislators.
Yes.
Except now it expanded a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely. We can expand it, and I think that's a great idea. And I think for the one that, the legislative breakfast, I believe we did expand the invite. We had about six that showed up, I believe, right? Six about showed up, but I think we did expand the invite, some just did not show up that day. But yes, we plan to do it again, we haven't established when, sometime in the summer, but we always want to wait until they're done with their session, then, they don't like to plan it too far in advance.
Yeah.
So we have to figure out when that would work for us and them. But yes, and then that next one is hiring a lobbyist. But if we go down this path of hiring a lobbyist for an institution, what are the real strategies? What are we really asking this lobbyist to do? Right now, we have some, we, the community college president has an aggressive legislative agenda. And I think it would be in our best interest, when we look at these baccalaureate and when we look at dual credit, that we have somebody that's in the ear of the legislators making those decisions because I didn't speak to it a lot regarding the, the House bill with 50/20 dual-credit one, but that bill was not doing us anything, a good service. It was really giving K-12 more control over our space, right? And so, but I was very active with the community college presidents on being aggressive and touching base or strategizing on how to address it and things of that nature. So we have to, I think, we, we can't just stay in our own local cocoon, we have to look at this, and I think we have done a better job of thinking locally, thinking regionally, statewide and nationally, but we have to continue, these are opportunities for us to continue to grow in these spaces. Need for education and training programs for the adult population. This is a space that we have, we're like the strongest, we have the largest adult education program, but we also have one of the largest populations of adult, potential adult students in the residence, 18 and above with no degree or with little degree or with, and if you say 18 and above without a high school diploma, it grows. And so, this is a space that we have to be extremely aggressive in, in the next couple of years, right? And so, I'm gonna, you're gonna hear me talk about this more and more and more, and I think our downtown west campus helps develop a platform for this space, but it's not going to, we're not going to put downtown campus as a limitation for adult students or adult education. But it's an opportunity for us to still grow in this space and catapult it to another level. So we're gonna put a lot more time, effort and energy into really looking at adult education and saying, well, how do we continue to grow and give them, those students, the opportunity to build their confidence and earn their credentials and continue to grow? I think, somebody earlier talked about the, I think it was Jim, you spoke about the younger student population earning more credentials, right? And one of the reasons I would think that is because a couple of years back, community colleges, leaders within community colleges implemented some strategies to develop certificates that then lead into the degree. So if you create and do scalable certificates, right, then you can earn your degree, by the time you get two or three of them, maybe you can earn your degree, to earn an associate's degree. So what does that happen is, is creating a career pathway. And when you create that career pathway, you're allowing students to feel a sense of completion and success that wants them, if they want to stop, they've earned a credential, they can go get a job. If they want to continue, they just earn another credential, build up their confidence and keep going until they earn a degree and then go get a job or transfer to the four-year institution. But it's key, is building these opportunities for success along their career pathway. So we have these opportunities to do that. Workforce development, we are very strong in workforce development. What we're trying to do now is create a stronger awareness of workforce development and find ways to share some of our successes. We, we've been focused on credit side for so long, but we've had a long history of helping with workforce development training in our community. And so now, that's why we've been able to access these various grant opportunities to expand and to grow workforce development. What we're trying to figure out is how to define, what we're looking at, when we talk about workforce development at Rock Valley College, many times we're talking about non-credit opportunities. We're trying to move away from saying non-credit because, anecdotally, a lot of people are saying, our, our industry partners and others who do not understand higher education, they don't understand non-credit. It sounds negative. It's like, it's not as important as the credit side. And so, when we talk about workforce development, we are referring to what we have talked about in the past as non-credit. So, we have an opportunity to continue to grow in that space. We've developed, we developed our CRM that allows for the first time to bring in workforce development students and credit of the house students into the same platform that then we can build different strategies to encourage them. You've taken this class, maybe you're interested in this degree, or you're interested in this career pathway and things of that nature. So these are all opportunities for us.
Why not take the non-credit off and just say workforce development courses and programs?
I think that's where we're basically going, we just got to make sure that.
There's no confusion?
Yes.
As far as the outside, as far as the outside world is concerned.
Yes.
Classes and programs. Internally, we know that it means non-credit.
Yes, and that's the next one. So now, what you're talking about is the branding and the marketing.
Branding it.
And cleaning all of that up.
Right.
In-house, so that when we look at our marketing materials, our website material, it's saying workforce development, and that's where we're going.
Yeah.
But we need to make sure that, so that when you start seeing workforce development reports.
Yeah.
You know that that's really talking about the non-credit side of the house. So yes, that's where we're going.
It must be noted that trustee Gorski has come back into the room, and so we are now back at quorum.
And it'll be also noted that this hall side laughed at me returning, saying it would be, it was best if I missed this presentation. You know, we do have future meetings where I can harass you all. You did your homework, you're fine.
Yeah, we were concerned that the door's open or something.
Okay. Opportunities, threats.
Oh, that's worse.
So then, let's talk about threats real quick. Some of these external factors that, that impact Rock Valley College, right? Threat, declining population and K-12 enrollment, we spoke about this. This is not anything new, but each year, it's getting closer and closer, right? So, when it comes to declining population and K-12 enrollment, we're already trying to figure out strategies that will grow our partnerships with K-12. Right now, we do a K-20 collaborative where we invite superintendents to campus and we talk about some of our strengths, weaknesses, and then we do roundtable discussions and get their feedback and see if they're in agreement with us. Like, we did it with the downtown, we did it this year with, in October, November 1st, actually, I remember that date now. So we did it November 1st, and we talked about different points regarding Rock Valley College, from dual-credit to downtown campus. And the superintendents and their higher-level executive cabinet administrators were excited about what we're doing and impressed about it, and some of them, it seemed like they were hearing it for the first time. Went over to Hunanega to sit in their, their board meeting, and lo and behold, one of the administrators announced the, that Rock Valley College, that they were at the K-20 collaborative and how impressed they were with Rock Valley College. So, we have to continue to look at recruitment and marketing and targeting adult learners, but we still cannot reduce the effort that we have towards K-12. With that still, we still have to keep it going. We still got to look at, that's why we still have to, as strategies, look at the dual-credit. How does that work without us completely losing our identity regarding community college? Declines in property EAV values, we talked about that. And I think even more so is continued, the continued underfunding of community colleges and potential decline in state funding. If you just ask Ellen, just ask her about underfunding, and when we look at the ways that we are funded as a community college, we are completely underfunded. And we know that, and Jim spoke about the adequacy, Equity and Adequacy Committee that the community college presidents and ICTA serves on that and a couple of other organizational leaders serve on that committee. It's about 50 or so professionals looking at how to better fund community colleges. That is an issue, right? It's a, it's definitely a threat and, but I will say that because of strategies, before I was president, we're employed, we're in a much better place than most community colleges. So that's really good. Passing other, you heard Ellen talk about OPEB. That can be a threat if we, but that's still about budget and funding and where we're at. And so, again, these should not be a surprise to anybody, it should just be confirming, confirmation that, yes, we've been listening to this, we've been hearing this for the last couple of years, but we've also been developing strategies to prepare for this, right? So, we're doing the financial forecasting as a strategy, we're looking at the 10-year based on the financial forecast and based on each year, based on when we get funding, we then do a financial budgeting process for the entire campus. And then, Ellen tells everybody, either you're going to submit a budget that's flat, or you're going to submit a budget to a 3% decrease, or you're going to submit a budget request for a 3% increase, whatever that may be. So then, from there, those are submitted, they have to be approved, and then we go from there. We also look at tuition. We don't, we're not ready to ask for a tuition increase, we don't think that's the best way to go right now, but understand that our tuition right now is extremely conservative. We could go up, how high could we go up right now in tuition?
$200.
Right now, we could be at a $200 per credit hour is what you're saying, correct?
$200, yeah.
We could be at $200 per credit hour right now. Of course, we don't, I'll be surprised if we ever come to you with that recommendation, but we want to let you know that that is a possibility. Right now, our tuition is $125 per credit hour to $140 per credit hour.
The 200 is?
150, excuse me. So, and it's between LIBAR or CT.
The fund, the credit hour limit is geared to the fund balance? There's a ratio?
No, no, the tuition rate is based on our per capita cost, so it is how much it costs us.
Per capita.
To teach, for education, for the education fund.
Right.
And we are capped at one-third of that by statute.
Right.
It's supposed to be one-third funding tuition, one-third funding local.
Right.
And one-third state.
Right, got you, okay.
Yeah, and it's, if you really get into how they really do that, it's a very complicated process that's very hard to explain. Is that safe to say?
Yes, it's safe to say.
Okay. So they're looking at trying to clean that up some way. Also, grant funding, I don't, we have done a phenomenal job of receiving various grants. So that has helped to offset or catapult us in a different space many times over. That has also helped us to gain national attention. I think one of the strategies regarding grant funding first was to hire our grants coordinator, Nancy McDonough, to help to research grants, help to write grants, help to just be in the room to talk strategies about grants, and she reports to BP Snyder. But then, after that, we start strategizing which grants to go after, right? Workforce development grants, career technical education grants, STEM grants. And so, we have received, and now, yes, we've, we've been a college that have been able to continue to receive TRIO grants, student support services grants, but I don't want you to take that for granted. That's a lot of work that goes behind those grants, and if you're not successfully using their money, you will lose those grants. So, to have those, continue to move forward has been great. So we've had the TRIO, we've had the Department of Labor grants, those larger grants, then there's been our statewide grants, and I believe, Dr. Stewart, in the last month, we just received, we had over a million dollars in grants? 1.4?
1.5 million.
1.5 million dollars that we received in grants that has helped us. But what I appreciate about that is, we have been one of the areas that they continue, they, the state continue to look at as best practices, how we use the Workforce Equity Initiative Grant, our Adult Education Grant, a lot of times, they're asking us to do those trainings or talking to us about how we implement. A lot of times, they're asking us to do those trainings or talking to us about how we implement and things of that nature. So, that's good. I appreciate that we're leading out from front. But those are some of the strategies that we use to address threats. Are there other threats that we haven't really addressed that you guys think we should be addressing? Open it up for conversation.
No, but I have one. I don't know if it's a strength, a opportunity. I don't think it's a threat. I'm not sure. I don't think it's a weakness, but the strength or the ability of our foundation to create scholarship monies. Because every year, it's been growing, the amount of money that's been made available. So, where does our foundation fit into either strength, opportunity?
I think it's an opportunity. It's a, it's been, it's been, it's been good. It's been a strength. But I think because there's always opportunities for growth, and as we're trying to, as we're building the downtown campus and looking at other programming, it's an opportunity for us to continue to grow and support student success. So, yes, we need to continue to work with the foundation, find ways to grow funding. But I would put that under an opportunity to continue to grow.
Any other questions, John? Oh, I don't even look like them.
But, but my comment is kind of, kind of going that way. I mean, other than obstinate, you know, trustees being a threat. So, John and Paul, perfect, perfect, Bob, thank you.
I would never say that, John.
In terms of what, to touch on what Bob was saying about funding opportunities, something presented earlier. So, in certain of the programs, we, you know, we look for partnerships for, for training and then job placement and like. For example, in the health science field for the areas that we targeted and the like. Do we get donations from, like, those institutions that might benefit, like OSF, Mercy Health, UW Health, for the, like, the medical programs from their grant foundations for? And I'm guessing some of that might be targeted, because one institution may not want to funnel people into certain healthcare things that they don't provide, but other than that, I mean, most of them need phlebotomists and lab people and stuff like that. So, do we, do we have outreach to them through the foundation or directly for helping fund those programs? Not necessarily as a guarantee, to crank out employees directly for them, but just to help, you know, provide scholarships and the like, so.
We have different levels of engagement with them. Some of them serve on our advisory committees to help inform our curriculum. And then, we have some that are providing scholarship directly to RBC Foundation to help them, help our students. All of them are trying to get in front of our students before they graduate or finish the class. And in most of those situations, health sciences, they're being offered opportunities, job opportunities, before they complete. But I'll use an example of our medical assistance program, right? So, in establishing the medical assistance program, was it Crusader? Crusader Clinic or Health came to us interested in the medical assistance program. And we developed the curriculum. They helped us to at least be, help us to, we informed them of the curriculum. They, they really liked the program, how it was laid out, but they also put their money behind it and provided $30,000 for scholarships to our students to go through the program. And of course, they'll be offering jobs that, we can't even produce enough right now. Those, those, those students will all be offered jobs immediately. So, yes, we are working with them, and to get to your last part. Foundation has the list of their CEOs and their foundations, and yes, we do make annual ask and things of that nature. At least one or two of them are being a little interesting on, on the, on what they want to support right now.
Oh, everybody has their, you know, their interest and their focus. I'm not going to criticize anybody for their, you know, corporate decisions. And then you're dealing with people that didn't actually make those decisions, and they're, and they're just trying to partner with you. So, I mean, you can't put the people that are in the middle in the, in an awkward, in an awkward position, so.
But we have a good relationship with them. I think even with our, was it our CNA program? Is, is that the one that we're doing with, is it medical? Is it a? Yeah, we have a, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so we are currently offering some nursing assistant programs where we actually have the facilities are paying for our students to be able to complete it. So, like, and at long-term facilities as well, because that's a growing need as well.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
All right, and then, do you envision needing any more funding for your recruitment and marketing programs?
Probably.
I like the, I mean, I like the honesty there, because, I mean, you're talking about keeping your, maintaining your K-12, and then going after populations that we've served, but maybe not as aggressively gone after in terms of, you know, bringing them in, because they're there, they're there now. They don't have to come through a feeder channel. They're already, they're sitting somewhere, sitting in the middle of this room, and we can't see them. We just need them to bring them, you know, bring them in.
Yes.
So, if, I mean, if you need, you know, funding for it, just come to the board with a plan for it.
And we will. It's, it's really, it's really, so, where we have, where we've struggled in the past sometimes, we, we stretch our people thin, you know, we add this, and we say, oh, and we just add the extra bullet point under the position description, say, okay, you can add on this and this. But I can't say this enough, we really need a strong game plan for adult education. And right now, while we, while we're focused on that, align it with our downtown campus. And what I don't want to do is come back to you and with one person under our admissions area, our enrollment area, and say that, oh, they could just do it, and they can have, no. You really need, we're talking two completely separate strategies and timeframes where adult students, you may have to work with them from 12 to 8:00 p.m. Calling them at 6:00 a.m. may not fly. So, you need completely different strategy to employ, which means you're going to need a different employee base. And so, yes, we need those, but the first thing I want to do is bring forward sort of an adult education plan so that we're all in agreement, and then, if we're all in agreement with that adult education plan, then the next step is, these are some of the dollars that we're going to need behind that to help us move forward in that space.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it, it's, this is a different topic, but you mentioned, you know, staffing and proper staffing or indoor resources. We heard earlier AI and stuff, in terms of how that might play into helping, you know, recruit people in that target. And, you know, it just, you know, example, I've, in the past, we authorized the purchase of a system to document and kind of plan for physical plant and stuff, improvements and cost centers and stuff like that. And I've mentioned to Rick and yourself that, you know, make sure you got enough people to input that data, because without the data, then it doesn't make any sense. Now, something like that, that could benefit from AI, have something scan our databases of all our purchase orders over the last 10 years and actually figure out what we've bought and what we've put in place and automatically dump it in the system. Now, that would be, that would be, that would impress the heck out of me, but that, yeah, all right, I'll get that on that right now.
Okay, anything more, Dr. Sperman?
Last thing is just talking about uncertainties. We really have discussed this throughout the days, so. But again, when it comes to the new executive orders, right? Look, we know, it's, we're still dealing with politics. So, while other people get really stressed out, and it's, it's really provoking the emotions, I'm asking us not to be so emotional regarding it. The executive orders are what they are, and every president goes through executive orders. We just need to figure out what that means for Rock Valley College. Now, when it comes to executive orders, ICCB has a process as well with the community college presidents that we go through and decide which of these executive orders are really impacting us as a state. ICTA is a part of that, those different conversations and things of that nature, so that if we really need to employ a strategy and mobilize quickly on something, well, we can figure that out. But right now, there's still, there is still legislation that, Title IX legislation that President Trump created first time in office, that have just now got implemented, and some of it. So, it's, it's a timing thing. It's not everything. It's not, you know, excuse me for lack of a better word, we're going to hell in a handbasket. You know, there are some good things and there are some bad things. We need to assess all things, and then just all executive orders and how they impact Rock Valley College, higher education and Rock Valley College as a community college. So, we realize that Robin Swartz, very good at helping us to figure out some of those things. I believe right now, your, your firm is already working on a opinion paper or something regarding some of the executive orders and how they impact higher education, so. Specific, we'll just leave it at that. There's some specific executive orders, but. So, we have the resources in play to help us to gather the data.
We got ICTA too.
And make a decision, report out. It's going to be ongoing. It's going to be ongoing. So, expect us to come back and say, oh, by the way, this, this, and this. But if you hear something that you think is a quick concern, continue to ask the question. I don't have, of course, we don't have issue with that. I just, I'm asking, that's from trustees to cabinet members. Let's not stress out about this.
Right.
This is normal things. Let's, we'll assess it and we'll review it, all right? Unfunded mandates. Well, we're in Illinois. We get a lot of those, and it is one of the areas that really irritates me regarding the unfunded mandates, because we always have to find the dollars. It's, it's sometimes, it's easier in the moment to find the dollars, but the, for that year, the fiscal year, because maybe something didn't happen, and you can use that money. But all of a sudden, you got to do it year over year. All of a sudden, your, that budget increases, and that becomes an issue. But again, I think that's some of the things that, you know, the strength of having a lobbyist for RBC, but also working with our lobbyists for ICTA and for, for Illinois Community College Presidents. Those are some of the things that we try to get in front of. I receive legislation and stuff almost on a weekly basis, maybe every other week. So, we look at these different things, and we try to address it as a, as the community college presidents try to address it as a whole. But sometimes, there's specific legislation that impacts us, Rock Valley College, and we just got to be prepared to pounce on it and share our opinion about that, all right? So, that's where we're at. That really is basically the end of where we're at. I can open up for additional questions, thoughts, or comments that you have, but.
Really? No, you don't want to.
So, but before, I also want to. We, we changed this process about three, three, three and a half years ago, I think it was, right? We've done it the last three years now, and from, and it's, it's a very, so we, the cabinet did some type of retreat usually in December, and we compiled this information. We compiled this information, look at what we've done over the year, and then we talk about the information that's going to be shared with the trustees. And then Heather and Ellen do a fabulous job of rallying the troops, gathering the data, pulling it together, creating this, this PowerPoint presentation that we all review, check it out, this and that, and then send it out to you. But this is still just a part of it, because next, we'll do a town hall as well so that all employees have an opportunity to look at the videos or ask questions, and we'll do some type of summary with them. And then do a Q and A, and then they, they get to ask questions and engage us as well. And then, after that's done, we actually put a survey out there to see if they agree. So, like, the first year we did this, one of the biggest issues we had was, was really the technical language that we were using. And so, they were like, you guys are trying, you're using the, like, larger language. You need to break this down in layman terms and things of that nature. And we were surprised, because we were talking to just the campus, but that was one of the themes. So, we tried to think through and strategize on how to engage and what language and how to share. And I will say also, Studer Education has done a great job of helping us to refine this process to get to this point. So, that's it. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, in terms of the communication, like, for, with the board or with the public, or for the meeting minutes and even drafting resolutions that we'll use and stuff like that, I would target seventh to ninth grade, you know, English language. I've mentioned it in the past a couple of times before, just because this goes into the public record, you know? And, and people in the future that may be going through our minutes and stuff may not know some of the jargon and the like that sometimes people in different specialties throw around. So, if you're right, knowing that, knowing what your future, not only your current audience, but your future audience might be in terms of researching things. I think you, you're, you're being respectful of somebody not knowing necessarily a particular jargon here. Like, over the years here, I've heard phrases, terms used that in education mean one thing, but in a couple other industries or disciplines mean something completely different. And I wouldn't necessarily use it for the public record, because somebody else may interpret it, you know, you know, differently. Yeah, I still get people questioning me why I put lines through my zeros for zeros, but, you know, it's just an old, you know, chemistry documentation type of thing, and so I try not to do it, but. And fortunately, in computers, you can usually tell the difference between a zero and a zero, but that said. But in terms of language and, and your approach, and then even your presentation today, I didn't see any problem with it. I didn't see any necessarily, you know, jargon thrown around, and if you did, it was necessary for it. You have to use some of the acronyms and the like that are, you know, there. I think somebody was struggling with one, didn't know how to actually, it was A-C-E-R or ACCC. Which one was that? I think you had it. It was one of your presentation. I think you were trying to come up with whatever the acronym. Yeah, ACAC or is AC, I don't know. Yeah, for that one, it's almost like, just say it, you know? But I mean, if, but if there's something that's necessarily OPEB and stuff, you just have to figure that out, you know? And I guess in, in, in documentation, you spell it out fully, put the acronym in print, and then hopefully, you know, if you have a question, you go back to the first instance of it, so, just in terms of writing, so. But no, I didn't have any problem. I thought the presentations were good. The language was appropriate. And the, I liked the priority, and I don't know if you changed it at the last minute or what, but Bob and I are frequently talking about, you know, enrollment numbers and knowing what enrollment numbers are in credit and non-credit. And I think, not to speak for you, but I think he also said, he wanted a mix of non-credit and credit workforce.
Trans.
Report, and I'm not quite sure. You might just work with staff after, or power and staff to get what you need, but. But that said, it works for me, so.
Thank you.
I do think, yes, the venue we had today was wonderful, a lot of good information and so on. But I, somewhere in my head says, you know, maybe future retreats should be aimed more towards strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, futuristic kinds of what-ifs. aimed more towards strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, futuristic kinds of what-ifs. We make a 10-year financial forecast, but do we have a 10-year college forecast? What do we need to do? What's next after Downtown West? What are some of the big trends in addition to what's going on right now, which we do, you know, almost every month in our regular meetings? So I know it's more futuristic, kind of.
So aligning our 10-year forecast with probably our facilities master plan.
Something like that, yeah.
And then, and the inventory list that you're talking about.
And that's why I plugged it gently, slightly, but knowing that we're, we're not quite there yet, but I agree with Bob, but I, not that I disagree, but I think staff did a really good job of tying in today where we're at today and what the, at least the short-term future forecast was, like three years out and you a little bit, you know, longer, which other, beyond that is kind of, you really need a really good crystal ball, but it, yeah, to tie it along with big expenditures down the road. We know what big expenditures we have right now because of the major projects, but what do we see beyond that? But that ties into the master plan, but that, you know, we've already been here, well, you've been here, I haven't been here in a long, four hours, and I mean, we got a lot done. That type of discussion would extend it probably another hour to, you know, 90 minutes, so that's almost like a meeting in and of itself, so. I agree with Bob in that regard, that some sort of communication or presentation is probably appropriate that way, so. Aligning all of these things together along with that 10-year thing, but maybe it's just a five-year plan, you know? Now, this is perfect, but I'm just saying, I don't know, I mean, I'd be happy with three, four, or five, because especially with your enrollment, you know, initiatives, it's, it's changing, you know? You, you kind of know where the trends are, but you need also enough information on the success measures of what you're trying to implement are. So, I mean, you don't get that in six months, that's more of an 18-month to 24-month type of, you know, thing. I think we were talking about, you know, metrics earlier. You could, you could go down to a weekly thing or more like every six months or every year, so. But I think that would be appropriate to have, but probably a separate venue.
Richard, any other comments?
Nope.
Richard, any comments?
No.
Any other comments by anybody?
Motion to adjourn.
No, we got to next, date of the next regular meeting is Tuesday, January 28th at 5:15. Meeting will be held in the P R room in the Educational Resource Center on the main campus. Date of the next committee, the whole meeting will be February 11th, 2025. Meeting will be held, P R in the Educational Resource Center on the main campus, right? And a regular board meeting, a regular board of trustees meeting, February 25th at 5:15. Meeting will be held in P R room, Educational Resource Center on the main campus. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Simpson.
Yep.
Gorski.
Yee-haw!
Trojan.
Yes.
Kennedy, yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of your day.
I'm glad you didn't have to reschedule. I wanted to be respectful of your time.